Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Got a lot to get through today. Record of attendance, Linda, you're good? Declarations of conflict of interest, anything right now?
Not sure.
Can always do that later.
Yes.
Okay. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? We're good?
No.
Okay. Yep. Go ahead, Counselor Mackay-Zachary.
This is for the CAO on the information I was seeking here about a month or so ago. Where are you on that?
But what impact?
He knows what it is.
You know what it is?
I hand you a piece of paper. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Mooney.
Thank you, Worship. Just put on there, and I see we have Charles here, but I think YASTA. We've all saw what's been in the news the last couple of days. We can put that on the agenda, please.
Good?
No. Roll of Yarmouth in all hands.
Yeah, we have that, we have that.
Okay, well, what about roll of Yarmouth in all hands on deck? There's been some Facebook rumblings. I'd like to have a clarification.
Okay, I don't know what they are, but you can tell me at the time.
Yeah. And I think maybe, I don't know if Counselor Lang is going to do it, but I'll put editorial.
Okay, good. Counselor Langjo?
Thank you, Worship. I just have two quick items, if time permits. These aren't pressing, but if we go late and you get a long agenda, I wouldn't mind bringing up paintings in council chambers. Also, I'd like to have an in-camera item on the compost facility if we have time.
Okay.
And that's about it, thank you.
Anyone else, additions or deletions?
Move the agenda.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Second.
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, I got a staff rep-
So, sorry, Worship.
Go ahead.
And we had, on Communities of Bloom here, we had a function here on Friday night, and somebody wanted me to bring back gear crossings, if that's all right?
Yeah, let's do that. Good. All righty. Staff reports, CAO report. CAO, go ahead.
Your Worship, my report was circulated on your desk here this afternoon. It's 12 pages, I don't expect you to have absorbed it, but if there were anything that has come up in the last couple of months from council, if there were any questions, more than happy to answer now, or if there are questions in the future, once you've had a chance to digest it, I'd be happy to reply.
Okay, good. Any questions for the CAO? Counselor Mooney?
I see you're talking with the Rotary Club on the tax arrangement for Rotary Park, and you're 95 percent complete, no problems there?
Okay.
Your Worship, the agreement has been amended to address the tax issue and has been sent off to them for their review, so I expect there won't be any problem.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any more questions for the CAO? Fire department report, I don't have one, chief?
Fire department, I have to report, we have any questions?
Okay. Everything's going well?
Everything's going very well, actually.
Good, excellent. Any questions for the fire chief? We're good, thank you. Planning department report, oh, sorry. Normally you ignore that for so long before you make noise.
That's right. Sorry, just to go back to the CAO, we had, there was a discussion on snow plowing on Main Street. Is that going to come up under the engineer, or is that something you can, I understand we're doing it, so that's good, so I guess that's been looked after, I just wanted to make sure.
We did a trial, we ran the plow down Main Street to see what the response was. The response was quite positive. I've talked to the engineer, and I've asked him to just give us a memo for the March community to hold.
Good. Planning department report, any questions for Arthur? And we have that, we have that report here. Anything? You good, Arthur, anything you need to?
I'm good.
Good. Operational services for the engineer, any questions for the engineer? I didn't see a report, there's not a report here, right? Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your Worship. Dave, just noticing on the streets, and I know you have, because you had brought, you had mentioned that, I think, a lot of spring thaw and whatever, the potholes that are coming up. I see some of the, your boys are out there putting in some, what is it, hot pavement they call it?
No, it's coal mix.
Coal mix. There's a lot around town that are, it's, the pavement's coming right off the other pavement. Do you plan on doing something with the, like on the Garry Street, Pleasant Street, and a few of the other streets? Is there somebody looking around?
We're covering all the areas and parts of the street, so.
Okay, 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 because, right, because I've noticed that there are some big holes, especially up along Garry Street and everything, and I'm sure you're aware of them, but I just wanted to bring it up, because somebody had mentioned it, and I said, "Well, we're having our meeting today, and I'll bring it up to Dave," and I see that the boys have already been out around, so that's good. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, your Worship.
Good. Any more questions for the engineer? Finance department, any questions for Jerry? Anything you want to share with us there?
Just on the state level, I was committed, one beer is a, maybe also the Grace Blue one, Grace Blue one, and there's the structure to see what the medical line lines we figured out of, and that's capable of coming to us in a week or two.
Okay. Any questions for finance? Yarmouth Recreation, did you just give us a report? Frank, did you drop?
That's for the-
That's for this afternoon, okay. Any questions for Frank, right now? We're good? Okay. Business, directors and managers submissions concerning priorities. Okay, I guess we're going to start with you, CAO. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. I will do my presentation first. Mine isn't so much on the priorities as it is around the context of the environment in which we'll be setting the budget this year. So in just a moment, I'm going to take a seat at the presenter's table, if that's okay with you. And following me, we've made a list of all the directors and managers who've been invited to present today. I will note that Mr. Shea had sent his regrets, he's not able to present today, so he won't be here. And I'm not sure that everyone actually has a presentation that they wish to make, so there may be a case where you won't have a presentation, but in any case, I will move to the presenter's chair, if it's your wish, and go through my presentation.
Good. All righty. Make sure you get a, I'll put it on presentation if it'll go there.
Thank you, Worship. Each year before we get into the numbers and setting the budget, I try and do a presentation for council that gives you some contextual information, just to sort of set the stage, I guess, for the environment in which we are, we're going to try and establish a budget for this year. So I've got a number of slides to run through, and if there are any questions on any of the particular slides, just stop me, and we'll try and explain what we're looking at, and then we'll move through. So there are two basic areas that I look when I prepare this presentation. One is to the external indicators, what's going out in, what's going on out in the community that will affect us in terms of setting the budget this year, but also in the longer term as well. And then I also look at some internal indicators, primarily through our finance department, that tells a bit about what's going on with our operations. This slide shows some general demographic information about the town of Yarmouth as compared to other towns in Nova Scotia. The first row deals with dwelling units, and so the town of Yarmouth relative to the average town in Nova Scotia, we've approximately twice as many dwelling units as the average town in Nova Scotia. So we're on the larger size, side of towns in Nova Scotia. A lot of towns are around sort of the 1,000 to 2,000 people threshold. We're considerably larger than that. We're, I think we're about the third largest town in Nova Scotia, and of course, that is outside of the regional governments. In terms of geographic area, we're not that much different than the average town. Our municipal operating budget, however, is considerably above average. We operate a budget of $17 million relative to the average town of 6.6 million. Our taxable property assessment is a little more than double what the average town is. And the size of council is approximately the same as the average. Towns generally are either five council members or seven, and so the average is six. So population trend, this is census information compared to the average, the average town in Nova Scotia. So our population has been around double the average town, and you can see there, there's a bit of a dip there to the last census in 2011, and there's no data for 2012, so it's shown as a straight line, although we don't know in fact that there's been no population change in the last year. The town of Yarmouth, by the way, population-wise, we are at the lowest population level that the town of Yarmouth has been in 100 years, and that's based on census data. This chart is a little bit revealing in terms of where the change is occurring in our population. If you look at this chart, and the parts that stand out, first of all, on the lower age groups, so this is, this is the change from 2001 to 2011, so from one snapshot 2001, one snapshot 2011, what's changed in our population? If you look at the school age years, preschool and school age years, you'll see there's been some pretty drastic changes. We're looking at 20 percent drop in population, children 0 to 4, looks like about 25 percent, 5 to 9-year-olds, 20-some percent, 10 to 14-year-olds, and so on. So we have fewer children living in the town of Yarmouth than we did 10 years ago, consider significantly fewer. Then when you get into what I call the prime working years, which would be, say, let's say 20 to 60 years old, there's a huge gap there, a huge dip in the working age population in the town of Yarmouth. We've seen a lot of people, and we don't have to think too hard to figure out where those people may have gone, but we see a huge dip, and that certainly affects our local economy. Then on the other hand, in the older age groups, we see a significant increase. So some of that is perhaps people getting older, but moving from here to there kind of thing, but in reality, I think people are moving into town, and when they're later in life, because services are here, and it's a little more convenient to live in town. So that is what's happened over a 10-year period, the population of the town of Yarmouth, and there are some things certainly to be concerned about. Other demographics, again, this is census data, and this is over a five-year period. We saw a 5.6 percent decrease in our population compared to the town average of 2 percent. So we were shedding population quicker than the average town. Median household income, we are about $10,000 per household, less than the average town. We have approximately the same employment participation rate, and generally, very similar education beyond high school percentages. So the one thing, a couple of things to be concerned about here is the rapid decrease in population, and of course, the low income, median household income. So unemployment rates out in the community, this chart shows southwestern Nova Scotia in green compared to Nova Scotia in red compared to Canada in blue. And southwestern Nova Scotia is certainly faring less well than Nova Scotia on average, okay? And that is of concern. We're a rural area, and the Nova Scotia numbers certainly include Halifax, and so it's not a surprise that we aren't doing as well. We know from past presentations and reports that rural Nova, sorry, rural Canada has approximately double the unemployment rate of urban Canada, and so, you know, southwestern Nova Scotia is entirely rural, and so we would expect that rate to be higher than Nova Scotia on average, and perhaps higher than Canada on average. There's a trend here, though, that is concerning, and is that, that is the gap that has been occurring over the last few years, since 2011, between the unemployment rate in southwestern Nova Scotia and the unemployment rate in all of Canada. Canada is doing better, and we are doing slightly worse, and so that is to be concerned Within the town of Yarmouth, our unemployment rate, based on 2011 data, 11.2 percent. So that's fairly consistent with the prior chart. You can see Yarmouth County at 10.7, Nova Scotia at 10, and Canada at 7.8. This is a projection that was done by CanMac Economics, and just to remind council, CanMac Economics are engaged by the province of Nova Scotia to do economic forecasting. They are the company that the province relies on to do economic forecasting. They do things such as multiplier effects when they talk about economic impacts, and they project unemployment in the different regions. They presented this information to UNSM last year, and they're projecting a rapid decrease in unemployment in southern region of Nova Scotia. The reason for that is not that they're expecting necessarily a huge economic boom with lots of jobs being created, what they're expecting is the outmigration trend to continue, and people who are in the workforce actually leaving. And that's of particular concern to us, because as we get to the point, as they're projecting 2021, 2.3 percent unemployment, that, there's certainly a point at which it becomes difficult to get services that you need in the community. And so the trend that will drive this is outmigration, so the solution to this is maintaining our population base, and strategies that will support maintaining our population base will work against this projection. So the internal indicators that we look at, there's a few of them listed there, and I'll go through a number of charts here for information. First one is our residential tax base. This is, this one shows the percentage change in taxable assessment. So up the side of the chart, you have in 2 percent increments, the percentage change in residential assessment from year to year. So for instance, in 2009, at this point, we had a 4 percent increase in residential assessment. That held in 2010. In 2011, we were down to slightly more than 1 percent. Whoops. And then we bounced back up to about 3 percent for a couple of years. Here's where we are today. Residential assessment in the town of Yarmouth has grown at a rate of 0 percent. We have no growth in our assessment base, our taxable assessment base, for 2014, 15, this fiscal year. This is what's happened with our residential tax rates over the past eight years. In 2006, our residential tax rate was $1.86. It was reduced to $1.81. It was reduced to $1.75. It was reduced to, sorry, stayed at that point, was reduced to penny last year. Now, last year's reduction, you'll recall, was a result of our shift, our five-year shift that we're in the process of, of moving the subsidy to the sewer rate, onto the sewer rate, and getting rid of the subsidy. And so we're bringing down both the residential and commercial tax rates as we increase the sewer rates. So we're making the sewer truly self-sufficient, and as a result of that, we're able to ease the tax rate, and so that's why the one penny dropped last year. Now, this chart shows you the difference between taxable assessment and market assessment. Market assessment is, sorry, do we want to adjust the screen?
I'm just trying to figure out how to get more of the screen on the camera.
Do you want me to take a break for a second?
Yeah, take a break and handle that. I can't, in my house, I never get to touch the remote, so. Still want to see you, but even if we can just, I should do it, sorry about that, Jeff. Thank you. Our lawyer couldn't figure it out.
He probably can't see me now, and there's nothing wrong with that.
See a little of you.
Okay, so this chart shows the difference between market assessment and taxable assessment, and the reason there's a difference is that, is that several years ago, the province introduced the cap program. And what the cap program does is it limits the amount of increase in your residential assessment that can be taxed by, currently and for the last few years, Consumer Price Index. And so what's been happening, you'll see, back in these years, assessment, market assessment was growing rapidly, and the cap was set, I believe, in those years at initially around 10 percent, and then it leveled off. Now we're at CPI these last few years, and so you can see the growth in taxable assessment is very flat. Actual market assessment in the town of Yarmouth the last couple of years now has been coming down. The gap between taxable assessment and market assessment has been narrowing. What that means is that within the next year or two, we'll actually be taxing at market. The concern is, if this trend continues, we'll actually see a decrease in taxable assessment, which means that one of two things happens. If we don't adjust the tax rate, we will receive less revenue. We receive less revenue, then of course, we have to make some tougher decisions. So I'm just showing you this because that is a trend, and it isn't a trend that all municipalities are sharing. This is where we are today, and, you know, in the next couple of years, it's going to be, if things don't turn around, we will be in a situation where the taxable assessment will actually be decreasing. So the cap effect, so I mentioned the cap, it's been in place for a few years, and so this is what, this is the amount of assessment that has been capped year to year, has not been taxable. And you can see that that peaked in 2010, where we had almost, was that about $15 million that we were not taxing? We were taxing all of the residential assessment except for $15 million. Now it's down to about $6 million, and you can see here that over the last couple of years, it's gone from about 14 down to 6, and so it's been rapidly dropping off the amount of assessment that isn't taxed. Now, that's not altogether a bad thing, but it has provided a cushion and has masked what's really going on with market assessment in the town. This is commercial assessment. Of course, there is no cap on commercial property. Commercial property's never benefited from a cap, so there were years back in '05, '06, '07 where it was rapidly increasing, and it peaked in 2010. And since 2010, commercial assessment has been slowly, gradually decreasing. This year, it is completely flat. It is remarkably flat. I had Jerry double-check the numbers, because I couldn't believe how absolutely unchanged it was. So the effective commercial tax rate, we've kept the same for a long period of time. Back in 2006, the province began the process of phasing out business occupancy assessment, and council of the day made the decision, as most councils did, to transfer the taxation from business occupancy to commercial property. And so the effective tax rate is the combined value of the commercial tax rate and the business occupancy tax. And as business occupancy was phased out, the commercial property got higher, but in fact, as a business, except for the one year in 2011 when the commercial rate was increased 7 cents, aside from that, commercial property has been taxed at the same rate since 2006. And what happened in 2011, just to remind council, is that we eliminated an area rate, and that was taken on within general taxation, and so that area rate was spread over a broader commercial base, so what was 10 or 11 cents was now able to be, on an area, was able to be absorbed by 7 cents across the greater community. So receivables, how are we dealing with collecting taxes? This is the trend, we liked the last part of this graph particularly well. We have made a focused effort on receiving our taxes, getting our tax dollars paid, and you'll recall that council last year made a decision around the length of time that we will allow taxes to be in arrears. The effect of that has not been yet seen in this chart. That will be seen when we do next year's presentation, because the first, the first effect of that will be felt in the spring when the new tax bill goes out and we do the tax sale list. So we expect that line to take a fairly significant dip next year as well. So this is a project, bringing down our receivables, and we've been working at it, and we are certainly below the threshold right now that UNSM, sorry, yes, UNSM and AMA in the municipal indicators have agreed that 10 percent is the threshold, and we're below that now, and of course, we're expecting to go lower. Detransfer tax, this is an interesting chart, from my perspective, because there's, there are a number of things that have affected this chart, make it look a bit wonky. You'll recall, a few years ago, we had some activity within the local real estate market that drove up property appraisals and assessments. So in the peak years here, we may have benefited from some of that activity that has since been discovered. We've also had a number of times when significant landowners within the town of Yarmouth have sold property, and I'll draw your attention to the 2014 spike that we're seeing right here. The difference between last year and this year is a single transaction. There's a single property owner that sold one property that paid us, in fact, more than that. 2014 would have been right here where that pointer is, except for a single transaction. A single, very significant property changed hands from one company to another, and resulted in a $55,000 payment to the town of Yarmouth. Room levy. The room levy is $2 per room night charge, is charged in hotels and motels in the town of Yarmouth that have 20 rooms or more. The last three years, this has been fairly low relative to the prior years, but has been fairly stable. And so of course, we're hoping, hoping, but don't know how significant to hope, we're hoping that the number will be up this coming year. The challenge that we have is that compared to this year, back in 2006, 2007, we had 13 properties in the area that were collecting this room levy. Now, I believe the number's four. So the inventory of rooms that potentially can remit this tax is a lot less than what it used to be. So we expect it to increase, we just don't know by how much.
Question.
Your Worship?
That's our money, right? Is that our money?
Is that our money? When the room levy was established in 2006, it certainly is a tax of the town of Yarmouth. We requested a private members bill through the legislature that allowed us to levy that tax. We created a bylaw within the town of Yarmouth that allowed us to levy that tax. We collect it. It is remitted to the town of Yarmouth. At the time when the room levy was established, council of the day heard from the operators that were collecting the tax, and they were concerned about what the extra couple of dollars a night would do to the business. They wanted to be certain as well that the money was going to go into marketing and promotions, which is what the bylaw and the legislation say. They wanted to be sure that none of the money went to administration of the money. In other words, they wanted this, to, if they were going to collect it and remit it and add it to their room night cost, they wanted to be sure that it was going to be directed to its purpose 100 percent. So what council did to help to alleviate that concern is they said, "Well, we will establish a committee to direct these funds, and that committee will be made up of the operators who collect the funds." And so since 2007, we've had a group, we call it the Room Levy Group. They meet fairly regularly, and they make decisions about where the funds that are collected through the room levy will be directed. Traditionally, the lion's share of that money has gone into our tourism association, YASTA, for marketing, and more recent years, a lot of that money was channeled towards the group sales position within YASTA to try and bring in event tourism.
I ask that, because I'm still trying to figure out the logistics of somebody asking us for $1,000 from the town of Yarmouth, and then asking the room levy for money as well. To me, it's the same pot, but I don't, I don't know. Go ahead, Counselor.
And, your Worship, I was on the Room Levy Committee for several years, and I think the Room Levy Committee- And I think the Room Levy Committee has a dedicated pot of money that they do give out. But it's basically, say, there's a tournament. It's going to be a one-day event that generates no room nights. They won't probably, a very good chance, you will not support that. But if it's an opportunity where an event's coming in, you're spending two nights in the town of Yarmouth, they will look at that differently than they would look at another event. So it might be two pots of money, but it's another incentive for groups and individuals to bring any organization from, you know, any sporting events, any organizations like the Knights of Columbus or Lions Club, bringing those individuals in. And I think it's, it actually, instead of being a burden on the taxpayers, I think it's actually a, it helps us out more than anything.
It's a really good thing. I just couldn't wrap my head around.
Yeah, I think they have a very clear criteria on how they award that money. And Jeff, and I think at one time, it wasn't, I think it was about $10,000, but it might be less than that now.
I think they actually give away slightly more than $10,000 now. But they set that as a guideline for themselves because they didn't want to set the expectation that there was $90,000 at one time available for grants through the room levy. So they kind of set that $10,000 to manage expectations.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Onward. Okay, so I mentioned municipal indicators. UNSM and AMA have developed a set of financial indicators, and I have a few slides with those on. They look a little different than they did last year and the year before because they continue to refine the indicators to make them understandable and certainly usable. I've used them with you folks since they were first available because I think they do help to tell a story. And I apologize if that slide is difficult to read. Let me see if I can work through it. The first row is reliance on government transfers. And the town average, the average town relies on other government transfers, 11.5 percent of their revenue. The town threshold, sorry, you need?
No, it's okay.
No, I can.
Okay. Sorry. Every time we click a button, you just tell me what to do, and I'll do it the next time. Got it. Thanks.
Okay, so as I was saying, the first row is reliance on government transfers. Obviously, we don't want to be too reliant on government transfers. And the threshold is set at 15 percent of our revenue. The town average is 11.5. Town Yarmouth relies on government transfer for 4 percent of our revenue. Uncollected taxes, you can see there that the threshold is set at 10 percent. The town average is 9.2, and their data had us at 10 percent, but we're below that now. I believe their data is 2011 data, so that would account for the discrepancy. Three-year change in tax base. Obviously, well, town threshold is optimistic. They want it to be above 8.4 percent. Town average is 5.4 percent. And our three-year increase in, or change in tax base was at 2.6 percent. And they have colored that in red for a reason. Because they know that the costs of the stuff that we buy as a municipality increases by more than 2.6 percent per year. And so they see that as an indicator of unusually slow growth in the community and an indicator that we may have something we need to pay attention to. So commercial property assessment, above 20 percent. Town average was, and sorry, that's percent change, or sorry, that's percent overall of your entire tax base. They want it to be above 20 percent in towns. The town average is 23.1 percent. Town Yarmouth, 34.4 percent. So in spite of the fact that an earlier slide showed us that the assessment of our commercial property has been coming down relative to other towns in terms of how much of our tax base is commercial, we're very healthy that way. That is, that's a good indicator. Reliance on a single business or institution. So they look at your tax accounts and they say, who's your biggest account? Ours accounts for 4.7 percent of our revenue. Our largest single taxpayer pays 4.7 percent of our total tax revenue. They recommend, of course, that it's under 10 percent, and the town average is 7.2. Stop me if you have any questions. Now, I'm going to have to refer to my notes for the first one here, the residential tax effort. I have some descriptions of the indicators.
Can't wait.
You can't wait? Okay, total residential tax revenue. All residential tax revenue, including residential area rates. It's multiplied by the ratio of residential to commercial assessment to estimate revenue from residential area. Let's roll by that one. I'll send you the definition here. We'll go by that one. It's red. That's a problem. I should know what it is. We're at 4.6 percent. Total residential tax revenue divided by total dwelling units divided by, okay, median household income. So this is how much of the median household income of your average tax residential taxpayer goes towards paying their property tax. Okay? How much of the median income earner, how much of their income goes towards their tax, their residential taxes? In the town of Yarmouth, it's 4.6 percent. They recommend it be below 4 percent. The town's average is 3.5.
Does that have, because my math is bad, does that have anything to do with the previous slide where our medium income is lower?
It has everything to do with the prior slides around our, it has to do with the assessment base. It has to do with the income, and it has to do with the tax rate. It is the three of those together. And so, yes, our median household income is $34,000 compared to the average being $44,000. So that affects the equation. But the other factors in there are our tax rate and our average assessment. Our average assessment has been coming down, and our tax rate has been stable the last few years. Deficits in the last five years. Well, they recommend the threshold of below one. I can only think of one thing below one, which would be zero, and that's where we are. The average town has run a deficit 1.1 year in the last five. Budget accuracy. They recommend that we be between minus 5 to plus 5 percent. The average town is 3.7 percent. Our budget accuracy is 3 percent. So on average, over a five-year period, we are within 3 percent of our projections. Liquidity ratio, current assets, current liabilities. They recommend it be above one. We are exactly at one where the town's average is 1.4. Operating reserves, the town threshold, what they want you to be is above 5 percent. The town average is 6.2, and we're at 15.5 as of 2011.
That's good news.
Our auditors would suggest higher than 5 percent. By the way, our auditors often address that when the question is asked, how much should we have in reserve? And I believe they say two months, which would be higher than 5 percent. Debt and capital. So our debt service ratio is at 5 percent. The town average is 7.4, and they recommend you be below 15. In fact, I believe if you get above 15, you get a nasty letter from the minister and some questions to answer. Outstanding debt, we're at 1.1 percent. The town average is 1.3, and they recommend you be below 3.5. Depreciation of assets. This is the, I'm going to guess, but I'm going to say that this one is the amount of your assets that has yet to be depreciated. Okay? So they recommend it's above 60 percent. So more than 60 percent of your assets are not fully depreciated, or a portion of them are not depreciated. The town average is 58.6. We're at 69.1. I'd suggest that one of the reasons we're at that level is because of the investment that we make year after year into capital, which creates brand-new assets, 0 percent depreciated in the first year. Five-year capital purchases, they recommend you be over 100 percent. Now, that's spending on capital relative to your amortization. The town average was 211.6 percent, which is extremely high, and I'll speak to that in a moment. We're at 235 percent. It struck me as being odd that the average would be that high, given that we are the only municipality in Nova Scotia that funds our amortization. How then are other municipalities, on average, spending 211 percent? The answer is, really, there's one answer. Within the last five years, we've had a federal stimulus program that has pumped a lot of outside money into municipal infrastructure. And that isn't, they don't differentiate between that when they do this calculation. So this is not necessarily from own revenues. This is from all revenue spent on your capital. Above and beyond that, or perhaps contributing to that, is the number of towns in Nova Scotia who have, in the last five years, built new multipurpose recreation facilities within their boundaries. And I think of the town of Truro and their multimillion-dollar facility, Amherst, Bridgewater, so on. These, you can imagine, you add a $20 million expenditure in one year, in the last five years, to your capital investment, that year, you're going to be many multiples of your depreciation. We expect as that stimulus fund works its way out of the five-year period, and as those facilities get older than five years, this indicator, the town average will be much less than 211 percent. And we expect that we'll still be above 100 percent. Five-year contributions to capital reserves. They want it, they say above 10 percent. Town average is 5. We're at 3. And that quite simply is related to the line above. We have been reinvesting our money. We haven't been reserving it when it comes to capital. So just to my usual line around the infrastructure is that Canada has an infrastructure deficit estimated to be $123 billion in 2007. The town of Yarmouth certainly owns a piece of that. But I think the thing that we should be proud of and that you should be proud of is that since 2005, our share of that infrastructure deficit, whatever the number is, has been decreasing. We have been putting more in than we've been taking out. We've been filling the hole within the town of Yarmouth and gradually, over time, addressing our infrastructure deficit. And that's it for my little show this afternoon. It was really just about context. I wanted to talk a little bit about where we are as a community based on these indicators and where we are as a town. And the slide presentation will be available on the website if you want to watch it again. And if you have any questions now or at any time that you have the opportunity to review the slide presentation, any questions, it'll all be more than happy to answer.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, I'm always one for the bottom line. So bottom line is, we're flat on the assessments, and which would translate to flat on the income, or close to flat on income, if not below flat.
I think Mr. Verren showed me his first draft of the estimates this afternoon, or sorry, this morning. And I think it came out within $100 on the revenue side.
So I'm always one that likes to look down the road. So looking down the road, and this year is this year, which obviously, we know where we're heading. What is your thought? When will we start to see the crunch? Obviously, there's a crunch coming. As there's an old expression, I guess, when the tire hits the road, we're obviously, we've known that we're going to have issues. We've known that we've seen assessments dropping, although we have a little hope here or there. The reality is, small town Nova Scotia, we're seeing that and looking at your demographics. We're not going to see a lot of growth. Reality, what should we as a town be doing? I know many of us, and I hate to bring up the proverbial tax rate issue, but many of us have got to realize, we also don't want to get into a situation where we're going to be whacking our residents, as Phil would say, with, you know, a 10-cent increase or a 20-cent increase on the rates down the road. What is your thought on where we're heading, given our current level of service, current where we're at? Where will we be looking, say, in two, three years down the road from now?
Your worship, if we do nothing different, all of those down curves will continue to go down. If we do nothing different. Now, last week, council confirmed its priorities, its priority goals. And I couldn't be happier with the things that you folks identified. You know, increasing the tax base, that's what a lot of this is about. The economy, be more open and inviting. If we can do those things, if we can be successful with those goals, then I think these trends may become blitz. I would encourage you, and we all have to take the time to read the report on the economy, the One Nova Scotia Report, titled "Now or Never." It's now or never for Nova Scotia, for the economy. It's now or never for the town of Yarmouth. We have to be serious because if we do not change what we're doing, we will continue to dig a hole for the future that will be awfully difficult to get out of. As I said at the first slide, our population is the lowest it's been in 100 years, you know? And we need to act. And I am pleased that you've agreed on priorities that I think can directly address your question, where are we going? So I'm going to be optimistic and say, because we have our eyes wide open, because we don't have our heads in the sand, because we've agreed on some priorities, and because I think we need to be optimistic, we need to show leadership, I think that the future can look better. We've got to be awfully careful about where we put those resources that we have today because it's not going to turn around on a dime. It's going to be a long slog, and it's going to take some thoughtful decisions on behalf of council and a lot of support from the people who are sitting behind me to get us where we need to go.
So, given that, the second concern is, I know this is a huge concern with the town's task force. We have also seen an erosion of our tax base within the town of Yarmouth to the municipality, to our sister unit, which is not a unique phenomenon. I know Kentville is seeing this, Bridgewater, other areas are seeing this. Where we have on the periphery of our borders, another unit, which we work very closely with, and I'm not being negative with the unit. But on the other hand, we have a unit on our borders that we do give services to, some of those businesses, but with a light return back to us, or at least a seemingly light return back to us via tax base. Any thoughts on that? I mean, it's a concern. We're seeing growth along the Stars Road stretch. We're seeing growth in the Dayton stretch. That's on our, right on our borders. And you know, and I know, that if there's a fire call, it's the town. If there's a police call, it's the town. If there's any sort of whatever, it's the town. You know, water, sewer, it's us. It's our infrastructure that is there, that is often doing this. And it's our residents' taxes in many cases, and we do pay a lot. I had a, yesterday, I went to get a haircut. And first, the comment was, I've got to pay $5,800 in commercial taxes here. These taxes are ridiculous. Frankly, I didn't think it was that bad, but we wouldn't go there. But the concern that I have is, is there any way that we could maybe, I don't know, we kind of do, recoup some of that service to those marginal areas? Or has there been any talk within the municipal, I forget what it's called, AMA, I guess it is, municipal administrators? And I know that UNSM has been looking at it, if there's anything that could be done there.
There's, your worship, if I may?
Go ahead.
The town's task force looked at that. And one of the items within that report that could address that directly is the tax sharing provision, that municipalities could enter into tax sharing arrangements. And I think it was one of the elements of the town's task force. But honestly, I think we addressed that already. And I'll tell you how I believe that. We do, we've talked about it before at the table, we have 20 partnerships right now. We do, we've talked about it before at the table, we have 20 partnerships right now with the municipality of Yarmouth. These are partnerships for delivery of service on everything from the water, the sewer, the fire. We have partnerships where they pay us either a user fee, in the case of sewer, or in the case of fire, they contribute to the budget. So, we have 20 arrangements where we help to offset our costs by being in partnership with the municipality, and so we don't get it directly in the property taxation, but because we have good neighbors, we're able to sit down when we have a service that we want to have, like animal control, we'll talk about later, where we actually are able to keep our costs down, because we're doing things together, and there are economies of scale in a lot of cases. And so, it isn't a perfect system that we are able to impose a taxation on those peripheral areas, it's probably better than perfect, in that it causes us to be able to, causes us to be incented, really, to create partnerships that benefit both communities. So, that's how I think we address it.
Do you want him to finish?
Yeah, he can finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and that's what I was hoping you were going to say, is if you say in law, we never ask a question you don't know the answer to, and that's exactly what we were seeking, because we often hear, and I hear a lot on the street, the whole topic of amalgamation, and I've often said to the many UNSM meetings I've gone to in Town Caucus, that Yarmouth is a model, in that we are, for all intents and purposes, almost amalgamated. In other words, we're so many, when you look at it, there are 20 different arrangements that are being done, and I'm really glad that you brought that up, and I know the media's here hoping people will note that, because, you know, we hear in the media, we read in the media, that you've got to amalgamate, you've got to amalgamate, you've got to amalgamate. Well, the reality is, is Yarmouth is one of the leaders, and that's thanks to you, Jeff, and thanks to your colleagues out in the county, the CIOs, have entered into some really neat arrangements, unique, and I will, I think I'd be so bold to say, unique, to a lot of communities in this province that are now stepping up to the plate, looking at the Yarmouth model. I mean, everything from garbage collection, to our water, as you said, to our fire, to whatever, and that's crudos to you guys for doing that. And I think it's, although we hear this, the famous A-word, the reality is, we've kept our identity, we've kept our community, we've kept our cultures, unique as they are, and on the other hand, we've entered into some really nice partnerships, and we continue to enter into those partnerships, we're very eager to, and I think that's a point that's got to be really made, that, hey, we don't, we're not exactly amalgamated into one big joint, happy little political body, but on the other hand, we do work very closely with our colleagues, as many of us around this table do, so thanks for that.
Your worship, if I may, I appreciate the support and the comments, but I think it really matters a lot, what goes on at your table. You know, my colleagues and I, we will get along, we'll work together professionally, but these partnerships don't happen without the political will, and council has shown leadership in that, all the councils in the county, so.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, your worship. Good presentation, Jeff. I look forward to these, because there's a lot of information there, and a lot of information that we need to know as councillors, and the public, and your staff need to know as staff members, and it's a good job, another good job. Jeff, would it be fair to say that with the information you just brought forward for us as councillors, would it be fair to say that what we're working with, we need to be very conscientious of the financial place where we are as a town of Yarmouth, when we have people with all good intentions and organizations come in looking for funds at the off-time, when we do our grants to organizations? I think we have to be a little bit more alert and a little bit more frugal. Would it be fair to say that when people come with, they're all good ideas, with the $5,000 and $10,000 and $20,000, and we have to really watch this, because there's a lot of wants, even after the grants organizations come before us. And this year, we put it out earlier, and publicized it earlier, and hoping that the people that have things going on in May and June would get on board, some of them did, and that was great. Would it also be fair to say that the wants and the needs, the needs should be more appropriate than the wants at this given time? Like you had just mentioned, that we have our priorities, even our priorities have to be really scrutinized and looked at, because we have to watch those pennies, because pennies make dollars. That's the old saying, and it is true, even though we don't have pennies nowadays, but the nickels certainly wind up as being dollars now, I guess. So, would it be fair to say that we have to be more conscientious of our spending, and where we are at this time?
Go ahead.
Your worship, I wouldn't suggest you haven't been alert or conscientious, but I would say you need to be more focused. We need to be more focused on the goals, and on the issues, because you're right, there are wants and there are needs, and I think the needs are the kinds of things that the One Nova Scotia Report is pointing out, and I think the needs are kind of the issues that we're seeing in some of these charts. We have to be very concerned about the viability, the sustainability of our community, and we need to focus our resources on stopping that trend, turning it around.
Okay, thank you. I won't go any further than that, thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Mooney.
Just touching on what Jeff said, and kind of alluding to Counselor McCoy, and what Counselor Landrell was saying, and what Jeff said earlier in his presentation, our revenues are flat, so there's only two ways to increase, is cut services or cut costs. And Ray Ivony said it in his report, is there's also too much of a dependency on government for solutions, and I don't count this as just provincial government, I count this as municipal also. In fact, he said, he went out of his way to say, the report isn't for government, but for the entire province. Given our economic state, Nova Scotians, expectations for services are out of touch of what is affordable. And I think over the last several weeks, we have been criticized for making decisions. Just because something was good six years ago, doesn't mean it's good today in our economic climate. And I sat on council in 1985, and what was good in 1985 doesn't fit today's criteria for municipal government, and Counselor MacLeod sat at the same table. So, municipal government is ever-changing, and to say something is good because it was good three years ago, or good four years ago, if it doesn't make economic sense, we're going down the wrong path around this table, my friends. And Jeff has highlighted some of the things in a broad picture, but we're the ones that sit around this table every day, make the decisions that make this community, hopefully, financially viable. It's our job to provide the most services for the least amount of money. And I know Dave, and Arthur, and Frank, and all those guys, every day, Jerry, I know every day, they work and look at cutting costs. I know the last year I was mayor, just with banking services, insurance, and phones, we saved $60,000 over a year. And if you don't know what that is, that's four cents on the tax rate, and that's from due diligence from Jeff and Jerry. So, it's an eye-opener, Jeff. I know you say the same thing every year, basically, but when you say this trend is going to stay on this course for the next two or three years, we have to be careful with every dollar we spend. So, thank you, Counselor McCoy, for highlighting that, and Jeff, excellent presentation, as always.
Was excellent. I agree with what they both said, all said, but I want to say this as well, that we sometimes sit here and we allude to, you know, what's going on out there, and how we get attacked, and I get that, but I still say that the calls that I'm getting, and probably some of you at the table are getting, are the ones that are saying, thank you, you're doing the right thing. That's not what ends up in the paper, and what ends up on Facebook, and all those things. So, I guess we need to keep it in focus, because, and I've spoken to a lot of people that just say, you know what, they just don't understand, they don't understand what's going on, you know, with Facebook and things like that, and we shouldn't really pay attention to it, but it is, it's about making the right decisions. The other thing, when it comes right down to it, the questions that we've asked of each of the directors and the managers here, I think we need to ask every single time. So, status quo isn't going to get us anywhere, it's going to take us down the continued path, so I'm really looking forward to the answers to the questions that you put forth, or we put forth, so we're good. Any more questions for the CAO? Any more comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. As the directors and managers come forward, if they have PowerPoint, they can plug it into the computer here, and I can assist them with that if they wish. I'll ask them to be careful about the extension cord here, that they don't trip themselves or cause any damage, and trip themselves up. I did tell them 10 minutes each, including questions, so just like I've stuck to the time limit, I'll expect them to, so.
Yeah, you're special.
Thank you. No formal presentation, I, as you know, I've worked with Jeff a bit on his, and since Jeff's used up my 10 minutes, I just wanted to make a few comments regarding your goals and objectives here. And the biggest thing we're doing in the next number of months is working with our new financial system and getting that in place. We still have that targeted for April 1st, and with that, we'll be able to do things like e-billing, which will, of course, save some postage costs, things like that, probably bring our payroll back in-house with that new system as well. And with that system, one thing that's unique, and that we're kind of excited about, it has a customer portal, which our residents will be able to, with a sign-up, they'll be able to get a secure registration, sign-up account, that they can actually come into our financial system and look at their own accounts, to see what their bills are, what the interest is on those bills, what's been paid, when has it been paid, all that kind of stuff, so just a neat thing for, you know, residents to see, as far as their accounts go.
Is that cool with the water and the fuel they offer?
Yep, yep, it's all in the same system. Another initiative we've done is, we've, in the last few months, we've been looking at giving residents and taxpayers more options to pay. We know we have people that live in Ontario, or they go south, and different places that aren't here in Yarmouth, that actually have ownership of properties here in Yarmouth, so we've worked with paymentists, we're probably about 95 percent done on getting that set up, and if you know, that's a web-based company that basically, you can use your visa to pay bills, there's a fee to paymentists, but we just get the amount that's due. And the other thing that we've done, and are close to going, I guess, client-wide with it, is having a pre-authorized debit set up. So, we've got two or three residents now that are in Ontario that have requested this, so they've agreed, and we've set them up on it, and we've just been letting this process run a month or two, before we go and promote it to the rest of the town, and it seems to be working fine for us, so in the next few months, again, we'll look at, you know, promoting the pre-authorized debit for people as well. As far as efficiencies and stuff, the new system, I'm not sure what they will all be. I know that, you know, as far as the office work goes, inquiries, reports, some asset management, those types of things will be, you know, a lot better than what they are today, for sure. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Jerry? Thanks. Keep it up.
You have seven minutes for trying.
That's right. Operational services.
Today, I'm just going to deal with the operational budget, rather than capital budget, we already discussed that previously, so my basic top priority is asset management, or management of our infrastructure. And what I hope to achieve, and what we have achieved in the past, to some extent, anyway, is to save money in the long run by spending money on routine maintenance at the proper time, to ensure that we extend the life of our assets. As well, this will ensure we maintain service to our taxpayers, and also, it helps to identify and prioritize capital works projects as well. Currently, we have a number of routine maintenance programs that we do every year. I'll basically list them, catch patients, cleaning inspections, spring and fall, spring and fall water distribution system flushing, and hydrant inspections, annual sidewalk inspection and maintenance program, annual asphalt inspection and patching program, annual sewer cleaning and flushing, that's a five-year cycle, basically, annual video inspection program, annual tree trimming and removal program, tree planting, asphalt markings, inspection and maintenance of decorative lighting in the main and water streets. So, in addition to those programs, we're looking at other proposed maintenance programs. I had suggested that we look at an asphalt recycler this year, in order to have hot asphalt patching in the off-season, which, rather than using a temporary coal patch, we spend about $20,000 on coal patch every year, so we could reduce that considerably, and over time, probably, recycler's worth $85,000, so I mean, payback is not that long on that particular piece of equipment. As well, asphalt cleaning, planer will enable us to do our own keyways for patching, and milling around manholes and curves and so on, rather than depending upon outside contractors to come at their leisure to do our work, and we end up waiting, and they only come for guaranteed amounts, so I mean, as well, we propose to purchase a small screener, not necessarily next year, but within the near future, to allow us to recycle granular materials that we remove from streets for street repairs, and water leaks, and so on. We can reuse that materials and save some money in that manner. Also, I would like to look at low-impact development best management practices that may be applicable to Yarmouth. Basically, these are, it's a new concept that has come forward, basically, it started in the States in the late 90s, early 2000s, it's spreading across Canada, it's out west. HRM has started a pilot project in Halifax to slowly get into it. It's basically dealing with stormwater management on individual lots. I have been approached, actually, by Queen Nova Scotia, to see if we would be interested in partnering in an education program for residents in a small, select area within our town, to deal with stormwater management, and what people can do to help reduce any problems from stormwater, deal with it on-site, rather than get it off-site as quickly as possible, get it in the ground, through rain barrel programs, rain gardens, disconnection of your downspouts, rather than go into a pipe system, use it to infiltrate into the ground, or into gardens, and so on. And along with that would go a lot grading requirements, I think we should look at that as well. Those are some of the things that are, I think, would help us in the long run to save money. That's my presentation.
Good, thank you. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, your worship. But Dave, those are really good ideas, I like the part where the equipment that you're looking at getting for patching, pavement, you're saying?
Yes.
Now, would your workers cut out the patching, and use the equipment that you're seeking to patch a hole, like we contract out now? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, in the off-season, right now, we use coal patch, and we end up with constant maintenance problems throughout the whole winter, and it doesn't last, whereas if you use hot patch, it'll stay a lot better, and it's a lot more efficient and economical to do it that way.
I understand.
And you can recycle asphalt as well.
I'm liking the idea, I really am, I think that's real good news. I think that's, that's, that's real good news because I could, I can just figure just very briefly how much of a savings that would be for the town and the taxpayers of Yarmouth and because we have lots of patching that can be done. And in the off-season, if we could do that ourselves, I say us, I mean, your staff could do that, I think it's a win-win-win situation. Is that on your, on your want list, do list for, for this year? Is that, are those other wants, if that's already in your budget?
That's in our capital budget.
Well, that's great. So, so you will be getting this, this equipment, hopefully, if it's approved. We, we have approved it?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Because I can see this, Dave. You've, you've thought long and hard on this for some period of time, I take it, because this is the right way to go. I, it's a win situation for us. I can see that there'll be fewer, fewer holes around town because the staff will be taking upon themselves to doing it. So, I think it's a win situation. I'm glad that you're, that you're going down this road.
Several other municipalities in the province have already tried it and it works, seems to be working well, so that's.
I can see it working really good, Dave. I'm, I'm glad and that's great. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship.
Good, thank you. Counselor Landell?
Thank you, Worship. A couple of things, David, very impressed as well. I'm glad, a couple are like drops in the proverbial bucket that has to do with water utility and down the road, when and if we have a meeting of the utility to go over some of this. One item you mentioned was rain barrels, which is really good. I mean, that's something that Communities in Bloom has looked at and kind of bandied and mentioned it to Jeff a couple of times. And attending some of the conferences I've been to, they're very popular in a lot of areas and they are tremendous savings. So, I'm really pleased that your staff is kind of looking at that as a possibility. One thing I did bring up previously, a few years back, but nothing happened with it, was this whole idea of a couple of summer students being water auditors. A pinhole leak in a toilet, as you know, causes a lot of water loss. You're looking at, in a quarter, I understand, close to, at least with that little meter thingy that we pass out as a gauge, I think it's 74,000 gallons is what we lose as a result of just a little small pinhole leak or a leaky valve. And we've discussed it at council. There was a motion of council, nothing developed. And I'm wondering, is there any hope that, because a lot of people I know have leaks. They don't know they have. I had a lady confront me about a week ago telling me that she wasn't even in her house for two weeks, for two months. She was away. And when she came back and she got her water bill, it was exactly the same as the water bill from the previous quarter that she received and there was, was no change, even though there was no one flushing toilets, using the sinks, et cetera, which makes me think there's a water leak. And when you talk to the lady, you say, "Well, do you have a water leak?" "No, no, I don't." Have we given any thought, I know it's probably went on the, not only the back burner, but the recycle bin somewhere, of looking at possibly, I'd love to see a couple of summer students trained to go into people's houses and offer to give a, a quick up water, just to do basic things like check the toilet, check the sink, do you have a drip in your sink? Do you have a drip in your toilet? Is there a bad valve here? And just tell the consumer, "Hey, you could save a lot of money on your water bill, just this one little grip. Do you have any idea how much is going on?" It's an education thing. And I don't know, has there been any thought to that?
Well, actually, I think it was last year, we tried, we applied for a program, but it wasn't approved through, I don't know, youth.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Yep.
But your, your viewpoint is a little different from mine. I'm not looking at conservation. I'm looking at stormwater retention and diversion through rain barrel program.
Well, that's what I'm doing. You see, you collect the water in the rain barrel and use it on your garden.
Yeah.
And it's diversion. You're not, instead of the water just going right down the ground and, and going out the driveway down our storm sewers, going in a nice big barrel, which hopefully the resident will use to water gardens and that sort of thing. That's, was my, we're on the same page. In some areas, I know they're subsidized, where the water utilities actually provide these barrels. And eventually, that comes off the water bill somehow if you're using it for gardens, et cetera. We had a garden symposium here last week and we had 70 people attend. Well, if those 70 residents each had a 50-gallon barrel in their property or 100-gallon, whatever it's going to be, that's a lot of water being saved and being used that's going back into, you know, basically going back into the soil. Because as you know, a lot of our problem with stormwater is basic rain. I mean, just running off the blacktop roofs, the flat roofs, the whatever roofs, or sidewalks or, or parking lots. And the rain barrel concept is one way to encourage people to conserve. And that helps us a lot because we don't have to process that through sewage treatment.
Well, if you give them away free, there's always a large, a percentage that never, ever use them, never install them. But if they have to pay for them, they tend to use them.
Yeah. I think you misunderstood me. I didn't say give them away free. Free, I, I said that many utilities supply them and they come off the water bill. So, people, if they're using them, there's a, they repay them back from, from the water bill itself. There is a little incentive provided, but the actual cost of the project is, it's a cost-neutral. But there would be subsequent savings, you know, to the individual.
Well, depending on whether or not funding is approved through Queen Nova Scotia for this program, they actually look after supplying these type of barrels and so on.
Oh, good.
Are we applying?
Pardon me? Well, I've already been in contact with them, so they, they chase the funding for these programs, so we'll see if they can get funding and they're definitely interested in Yarmouth.
Good. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Landell and public that's out there listening, on your water meter, and Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, on your water meter, there is a, a gauge. And when, if that gauge is moving, any, anyway, when, if you look at it, you haven't got any water running anywhere. If that gauge is moving, you've got water that, you're losing water somewhere. Am I wrong by saying that, Dave?
There's a low-flow indicator on that, on your meter. Yes, there is.
Right, that's right. And I sometime get onto my basement where it's situated and I look at that gauge and it's right up straight. It doesn't move. So, I'm good. I'm good with that. So, anybody that wants to take the time and get on wherever their water meter is and look at it when you know there's no water running, and if you see that thing moving, you got to trace your water leak down because you have got water that's moving somewhere. And if you're not using it, you're losing it. So, anyway, that's just some information for those people out there. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Counselor Dennis?
Yes, Dave. All I want to know is the hot patch equipment. Once you fill in the hole and do it, you won't have to do it, touch it again? Is, is that the way it works? Like if you do it in the winter?
I'm not, not necessarily, but it, it will stay a heck of a lot longer than coal patch will. And you're not forever filling a hole. In all likelihood, it will be permanent.
So, you'll be able to keep more up to date on the streets and?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Good. Any more questions for the engineer? We're good. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Arthur, planning?
Yes, I have a brief presentation. Got to watch the wires.
I know it's here, so.
So, I'd like to just point out to council how that may fit in with your goals and priorities with regards to budgets. And so, the review and the municipal planning strategy itself is, it promotes sustainable developments through development of goals, objectives, and policies of council. It also includes the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. It includes the Climate Change Action Plan. And the policy provisions are implemented through a land use bylaw. So, through the Municipal Planning Strategy Review, we also have policy statements promoting infrastructure development for the town, which includes sewer, water, and roads, water treatment, solid waste disposal, transportation, floodplain, and environmental protection, and protection, that's RCMP, and health services. So, through the review, we'll have the opportunity to review those policies and objectives and update them as well. Through the Municipal Planning Strategy, we also promote social and cultural environments. We have sections of the Municipal Planning Strategy that deals with education, programming, and facilities, recreational programs and facilities, tourism development, heritage conservation, and cultural institutions as well. Through our Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, we identified seven components, which I feel fit in with your goals quite well. First one being economic prosperity. That includes growing the tax base and, and keeping a healthy economic community. A sustainable transportation system, sustainable public infrastructure, which Dave touched on, sustainable environmental initiatives such as the rain barrel program. We also talk about sustainable heritage, cultural, and social developments. We promote a livable, green community through our statements and policies. And we strive to be a healthy and safe community. So, that's just the seven components of our Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. And through the Planning Strategy Review, we'll have the opportunity to take a look at those and update them as well. So, through council's goals, objectives, and policies of the Municipal Planning Strategy, we strive to create a sustainable community by growing the tax base in a reasonable and fiscally responsible manner, by creating an open and inviting atmosphere through the development of public spaces and recreation areas and facilities for all ages, and by providing the environment where town services can be provided efficiently, effectively, and economically. So, I think those are great goals to proceed with. And if there are any questions or comments.
Can you go back to the last slide, to the previous slide? Grow the tax base. Okay. I, I guess I look at parts, that's probably why the review. I look at some parts and I think, how are we going to grow the tax base if we are so stringent on our, all our rules? And that's my concern, that's my concern. But that's why the review.
Yes.
Any questions for, for Arthur? Counselor Landell?
Thank you, Worship. Excellent points. Number two is especially exciting because one of the biggest concerns that I've been told is that we're not warm and inviting, you know, for business coming into town. And I do hope that we're going to be following up number two because that's critical. We have, and I've said this many a time to the CAO.
Number one?
Number two.
Oh.
Creating an open and inviting atmosphere.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The, the, you know, and I think the CAO has heard this so many times and I'm going to reiterate, reiterate it for the 500th time. No is a word that should never be spoken in this building. We should never be saying no to anything, you know? It's, it's how can we do it? How can we do it? Yes, we have bylaws. Yes, we have regulations. Yes, we have advisories, whatever, whatever. But if there's any way we can accommodate a business to grow in our community, and this is one of the goals that we have as a council, to get our, our tax base, and we have to be innovative. We have to be Goner of the Days folks. And Phil Mooney just commented a while ago, you know, the reality is, you know, we've got to make some changes here. And this is a council of change and I'm thrilled to be part of that. And I think we've got to realize that. The CAO alluded to it in his presentation as well. And Arthur's in the driving chair upstairs. I mean, any business that comes into this town has to go through that planning office, whether they put a sign-up, whether they're going for parking, whether they want whatever, they have to deal with the plant, the buck stops there. In many cases, yeah, the buck stops there. And if they're turned on, that's great. But Your Worship, if they're turned off, I know I'm one council is going to be really ticked because we don't want to hear this anymore. We want everybody to be on board. We want people to work positively. And I'm excited about number two and I think that's so important. There should be a ban on that word in this area. Anyway, just my 10 cents.
That's CAO. Did you, oh, counselor?
Go ahead.
Hit both buttons.
Excuse me.
Go ahead and then.
No, I, I, I totally agree. I think we have, we have a brand that doesn't represent the will of council. And the brand is that we are restrictive, that we are unwelcoming, that we, that we are anti-development. And that brand is not what this council has been saying. And so, we need to change the brand. And part of the review process will be engaging the community so that they are a part of that and so that they understand that what we are trying to do is be open, inviting, pro-development for, for all the right reasons. And so, it's as much a rebranding process as it is a review process. The one thing that I've, that I've said to council, and I'll say it again just because we're repeating ourselves today, is, is that our rulebook, our, our land use bylaw has as many, many restrictions in it. But there are very few times when applications are made to amend those restrictions, to change those restrictions, very few times do we say no at this table. We say yes 90-some percent of the time. And so, my, my beef is, if we were going to allow something anyway, why do we put the rule in place in the first place? Because all that does is it creates a speed bump for development. And people, sometimes they'll, they'll see the barrier, they'll see the challenge, and they'll walk away. They'll go somewhere else. And so, the, the intent with the review is to understand exactly where your line is. Where does the community say no? And when we say no, we'll mean no. So, you can apply to amend and the answer will likely be no because the, the plan will suit the times, be in line with our goals, be in line with the community values. And no will mean no and yes will, will be more often the answer.
Amen to that. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, Your Worship. My question's for Arthur. Arthur, when do you plan to getting the, the revitalization up and running, the, the look at it?
We're working on it now. It's about a three-year process.
Okay, so, will council play any role in this or is it just go through the development department? Just through your?
We actually have an update for council from our planning advisor committee on Tuesday evening that will be going to the next council meeting as an information package.
Okay.
Just to receive and place on file.
Okay.
Yeah, but I want to keep council informed.
That's, that's, that was my thought, that you will, you will be updating council periodically on it.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Mooney?
And just to echo Your Worship, what Counselor Landell said and what the CAO was alluding to, we had an opportunity over the last month, this council worked with an individual that wants to put some, purchase some land from the town of Yarmouth, wants to put up some buildings. And I think what they did upstairs and what Jeff did and everybody else, I think, went above and beyond. We, we didn't say no. We said, "What can we do to accommodate you?" Some of our bylaws were restrictive, but we changed them. We changed some of the covenances on, on what he wanted to have done. And hopefully, this summer, you'll be seeing some progress on what this gentleman was going to do. And that's going to, basically what you said, Arthur, is increase our tax base. We didn't say no. We said, "What can we do to accommodate you?" We didn't do it out in this public forum, but we did it, we did it in camera because there are negotiations, because we're talking about price. So, we don't say no at this table. Jeff is right. You know, we try to accommodate people and, you know, the rules are, are just a guideline. What we try to do is be fair and equitable to everybody. And, and you'll see that. And I think hopefully, as we get more used to each other, Arthur and everybody upstairs and Jeff sees which direction that we want to go because that's our top priority, is increasing our tax base, we are willing to look at things and do things differently than we used to do. So, Arthur, excellent presentation and thank you very much. And that's looking forward to the future, right there.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I hope it doesn't take three years, but you know me. I hope it doesn't take three years. I hope it doesn't take three years. I think councillor Mooney said it all, we're trying to say yes. I just want to say this, that, that we can only make changes when we're aware of things. So the phone calls that I get, and probably what the councillors get as well, they're the phone calls where people have gone and asked questions and the answer's been no because this is the bylaw, this is the policy, this is what you have to follow because it was implemented by council, but we never, we never hear back. So my biggest fear is that somebody that has something to say, a genuine concern, just goes upstairs and walks out and says, I can't deal, I can't deal with this? So somehow we need, somehow we need to know what the concerns are. Does that make sense? You know what I'm saying?
And that's where public consultation and engagement plays a part.
Exactly, exactly. It's a big part. So in the end, I think it's going to take a mixture of guts, just change what needs to be changed, and Jeff said it bang on. We change things inch by inch by inch instead of just erasing the whole three yards. And then public education because there are good reasons for some of those really sturdy bylaws, but, but the public doesn't maybe understand all of them. So I think we can accomplish all that. Thanks, Arthur.
You're welcome.
Very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Dennis?
Oh, could you back to that, Arthur?
Oh, back to that slide?
Yeah, okay, well, it was creating an open and inviting atmosphere through public spaces and I lost the rest. Recreation, that's what it was. So we have a correspondence later here about ATVs on Water Street. So I have to say personally that I'm in support of the connection of the two trails. And I believe this is a step in the right direction, and I hope the province grants towns and municipalities the authority to legislate through bylaws. And as others have stated in the past, this is a great source of economic prosperity. We talk about moving forward and opening our doors. Well, this can be a beginning. We need to promote ourselves as a great place to live, and that means allowing activities that families can enjoy. And if you want to entice seniors, many of them like to ride ATVs. So we talk about that we want to open doors and that we want to provide public spaces and recreation, but yet we're standing in the way of something like we did with, say, the motorcycles, where Digby's doing really well with the motorcycle rallies. We could be doing the same thing with maybe the ATVs. It's a short stretch of road that I think that we're losing out on.
That's provincial legislation.
Yes, but we're waiting for that to change.
But as far as I know, they do not plan to change the legislation to allow them in the roadway.
Well, at the UNSM, we passed a motion to pass that to, for government to change.
Allow them on the shoulder of the roads.
Hmm? I missed that one?
They're not passing legislation to allow them within the roadway where vehicles drive.
Right.
So there's no room on Water Street. So I don't know.
So.
Personally, I don't know where they'll go.
Oh, okay. So I guess as you say, if there's a will, there's a way, right? So what if Water Street was turned into a one-way street?
You'd have to talk to the traffic authority.
Because a lot of towns, their main street is on the water and it's a one-way street. I'm just, I'm just saying, like an idea. But Water Street could become a one-way street that they have to. And the one thing about most of the towns that are quite successful when they're on the water is their shops are along the water as well. So that's a draw because if we, when we get the ferry, if there was more shops on Water Street, if it was a one-way street, then you go through there and you come down Main Street, which is another shopping district, eventually. It's just an idea.
Frank gave it a thumbs up. Well, those ATVs are going to bring a lot of mind. Councillor Landell? Go ahead.
Yeah, but Frank doesn't have to worry, there's no kids left in the area, so he's going to be phased out anyway, we'll be going to seniors thing. Just to weigh in there, councillor Dennis, you know, the whole point on the ATVs have been a very sensitive issue for a lot of municipal units in small towns, and it's been heavily debated with town caucus. And Yarmouth is not unique in that we have a water street. And if you look to Arthur's, climate change will probably be underwater in a few years anyway, so it's kind of moot. However, the issue, the issue here is, is the actual amount of shoulder that will be needed for the vehicles. And I believe, and this is to the CAO, and maybe I was having a senior moment at the time, not being as youthful as my colleague, the deputy mayor, so don't have his blessed memory, blessed memory here. We did discuss the possibility of the county looking at twinning the trails out there. Like the thought was that the, the two railroad tracks kind of meet out in the county versus the town. And I mean, these ATV-ers, and I will confess, I'm not one of them because I've watched too many Bugs Bunny cartoons, so that'll be me in a tree or a ditch or something or blowing up. So, but we did talk about the possibility of them doing a link between the two rail beds, happening somewhere, airport slash reserve area slash somewhere in there. Has anything come of that? Because to me, that would be the logical solution. In other words, have their area, maybe give a, create down the road an ATV park where they could park their vehicles on the edge of the town and people could walk in or shuttle or whatever into the town itself. Because Water Street's a pretty jam street. I mean, I'll be honest, we don't even have room to park cars on there. I mean, if you have both sides of that, that street parked, it's an issue. It is an issue some days to get down there, especially with the big trucks. I agree with the councillor, it's good to work at, but we've got a lot of, we're a working waterfront. I mean, that's the other side of the coin. We get a lot of trucks moving and we don't have a lot of leeway. And I know one thing we did bring up at the table was the possibility of knocking out that median on Vancouver Street as a possibility to get the trucks moving better down there. And if our traffic authority day wants to make that a one-way, I've got no personal problem with that. I'd like to see us get a better flow for the trucking traffic in the town. It's an issue, but I know I'm digressing off of trails, that's another rant. Jeff, though, tell us, what's happening with that linking of the trails outside of the town?
CAO?
Thank you, worship. There is, there is correspondence on that, item HAB on today's agenda. They're not widely celebrating that idea. I think that's, that's probably the kind of, they're not embracing the idea. I think they, they want us to go a different direction.
Councillor Mackay?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, I'm not an ATV rider, and although I, I'm very privileged to have them driving by my, where I live down by my way, down on the, by the treatment plant and that, and they usually have races there two or three times a week during the nights. Either the little motorcycles or the four-wheelers, three-wheelers. Some only have one wheel, I don't know. But anyway, the Water Street area, it's an industrial, it's an industrial area. If you're thinking on making that a one-way street, I think you better really look into the planning of that because I don't know if it would really work for our fishing industry during the summer or even in the winter months. I'd be all in favor of maybe parking on one side of the street rather than making it a one-way street, except both, both sides of the street. But far as the ATV people go, this has been an issue for the last five years. It reminds me of another issue we're having out at the Mariner Centre. Sometime, they just don't, no's just not good enough, we're not ready at this time, or you have to look at another avenue. It's just not working for them. We get letters, every time there's a new council, every year we get letters, us and the same thing. Water Street from our traffic authority is not a use that we want to get into for ATVs. It's unsafe, they can't ride on the shoulder of the road, we're not going to take out sidewalks, we're not, we can't widen it unless we make a bridge in the harbour somewhere, fill in there, that's the only way. The alternative was, we sent them the alternative, they don't want to go with that. I read the letter, it is, it is on the agenda here, but perhaps if we can settle it, settle it here now, that, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion that we're not ready at this time to use our Water Street area for ATV uses at this time. It's not, it doesn't fit in with our planning and it doesn't fit in with our traffic authority's recommendation. So I'm woo-hoo that we send the ATV association a letter and say we're not ready at this time to take that. Large expenditure would be, even if we could do that, there's a lot of planning and a lot of cost to do this. So at this time, I'd say we should send them a letter, thanking them for their concerns and, but there's nothing we can do at this time for Water Street area. That's my motion.
So I just, I'm just reading the letter now. They put forth a suggestion to the Ministry of Transportation to adopt legislation similar to Ontario where municipalities can designate avenues on which the off-highway vehicles may travel through the towns with traffic. Okay. So they're asking, will we support that legislation if it's, if it's passed? I don't know. Anyway.
Go ahead.
I would support it.
Well, second motion for discussion.
Okay.
I think, I think that question is already in the Department of Transportation's hands. We don't have any leeway or authority to do it right now and until the provincial government changes their mind, there's not much we can do as a municipal unit and.
I think we've already passed that one time anyway, that, that we wasn't going to use Water Street. If we go back in our notes about two or three years, we've already said we wasn't going to use Water Street because we couldn't. It was recommended by our traffic authority not to do that, we couldn't do it.
And not, not that we couldn't do it, I don't think we're legally allowed to do it, right?
Yeah.
So until the provincial government, Jeff McLellan, Minister of Transportation, changes their mind, and I think the UNSM passed a motion this year asking that each municipal unit be allowed to make that decision, until that's changed at the ministerial level, I don't think we have any jurisdiction over it.
So all their, so what they're asking is if that legislation passes, do we support that legis, do we support the legislation? So, so I, so from my standpoint, I support it, doesn't mean I support it on Water Street, but I would support it.
But there's, there's, and, and you're going to need a crystal ball or the eight ball because you don't know what the legislation's going to look like anyways when it comes out.
No, you don't.
So, you know, you're just guessing lottery numbers right now.
You know, to be fair, to be fair to the ATV-ers, I wouldn't say yes or no right now myself personally until it was, if it's passed through, through the Department of Transportation, through the minister, I would like to look at it to see. I wouldn't, I would not go on the record saying, for me, I'm speaking myself, to say yes or no, right, right at this time.
So what was your motion?
I don't, I'll probably withdraw that motion, your worship, because if I, if I remember right, we've already given the answer about driving ATVs on Water Street and that was a no way back.
He's going to withdraw his motion, you good, okay?
Thank you, your worship.
Okay, councillor Landell, you're good?
Well, yeah, wise move, you know, and again, just to reiterate what councillor Mooney was saying, UNSM, when this was brought up last year, did refer it to the province. It's a provincial item. And let them worry about it at this point. We do not have any say on that and, but I do think the point that was raised here is something we really should be looking at and since we are in committee of the whole and our traffic authority's sitting right over there, is this idea of at least part of Water Street becoming, you know, parking on one side only. That is, especially in around the Glebe Street area, that's becoming, it's quite congestive there and I really think we should be looking at that. This was kind of brought up at the last council, it kind of went under the wayside, there was no formal motion. So I'm going to make a motion, if you don't mind, your worship, on this, just to put it on the books and, because I know we've discussed it, mended it around and nothing's for that. I'm going to put a motion that we direct staff to contact the traffic authority, I know he's sitting here, but it's a whole different entity. There's bureaucracy upon bureaucracy, that we direct staff to contact the traffic authority to investigate the possibility of making a part or, or a considerable part of Water Street, a, no parking on one side.
Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any more discussion?
Question.
Deputy? You look like you could.
I don't care for motion.
Okay. We'll see what happens. Okay? Good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried? You want to make that motion? Councillor Dennis?
Would it be okay to also add to, to check out, to see, I don't know, what did they do? Investigate about making that street into a one-way street? And then that way, one sidewalk and the opposite sidewalk could be used for the trail?
Is that in your motion?
That's in my motion.
Is your, is your motion to investigate the feasibility of Water Street as a one-way street? Okay. Do I have a seconder?
I have an issue with that.
Okay. All right. Don't have a seconder. Sorry. Okay? Anything else on this? We're good?
We're good.
All right, thank you. Frank? Welcome. Yarmouth Recreation, and what are you going to do to help us?
Seniors.
Now, because recreation is for everyone, I guess, so.
Thank you, your worship. I did, I did distribute some information about our, our upcoming budget, and I'm not going to go over that today just for the sake of time, but I did want to touch on a few of council's priorities and how, how we work along those lines. We're coming up this summer on 20 years of joint leisure services, joint recreation services in the town and municipalities. So I think when council was talking earlier about amalgamation and all the joint services, I think we're a true testament that shared recreation services in the area works. I was just thinking about, I grouped the four priorities into two groups. The first one is save money and be more efficient. And I guess in the recreation world, $500 is a lot of money in terms of when you're doing programs for children, youth, adults or seniors. So we are constantly seeking sources of revenue when we're planning programs, projects. But I think the biggest savings that, that I can think of as far as our recreation services is the partners that we involved in, in the community and the community of Yarmouth County and stretching out into Clare, Digby and even into Shelburne County. We have a Yarmouth Shelburne Municipal Recreation Association that over the years we've, we've partnered on numerous types of opportunities, whether it be snowshoeing or skateboarding, and we share resources so that a little bit of money goes the longer way. And as I mentioned before, a $5,000 project for our department would be a big project in, in the terms of our work, but if you split that up amongst six recreation departments, it, it makes the money go a little bit further, so. We have great support from the province of Nova Scotia. We have a regional representative that goes above and beyond for, for Yarmouth, Debbie Smith. And there are more opportunities for, for grants and different things supporting physical activity and recreation than ever before. And I have highlighted some of those, so, some of those projects and funding that we have received. Also, the other thing, the, the, our department isn't trying to be the end-all and be-all for, for recreation services. We, we know we don't operate ice services and we don't operate pools, but we regularly send people to Gil and his staff at the Mariner Centre. We regularly promote what they're doing and the same as we do with any community organization or minor sport group. So that's something that we, we help them. I think this past year alone, we, we've helped four minor sports and it may, may sound simple just with. send people to Gil and his staff at the Mariner Center. We regularly promote what they're doing, and the same as we do with any community organization or minor sport group. So, that's something that we help them. I think this past year alone, we've helped four minor sports, and it may sound simple just with doing registration. Four minor sport organizations in doing registration, getting all those kids to sign up, pay their money, and collect that. That's a big job for a volunteer organization, and we took in over $125,000 in registration fees for four minor sport groups. So, I think we are saving money where we can. We're pinching pennies, and we always try to work efficiently as possible. Within the town, the recreation services that we provide, just a quick scan, Meadowfields Community School is truly that, the biggest community school that we have that is used almost seven days a week. We have a good partnership there with the private owner and lots of opportunities for children and youth. And I know there was some discussion around the children all going away. You can see that in some of our programs, that we're recognizing that the old five-to-12-year-old age group is changing, and we're adapting to that. We're looking at after-school programs for teenagers and youth activity nights for seven-to-13-year-olds. So, we're branching out, doing more programs and events for not only children, but youth, adults, and seniors. And seniors, you can see, over the last few years, we've even changed that. It used to always be 55-plus, but now it's 50-plus. So, we're adapting with how our population is changing. Then you look at Lake Milo. Lake Milo is a busy spot in the summer, but it's not only busy in the summertime. We have an active community hall that's busy with various community users. Our sports fields are bar none. I can honestly say, being a baseball player, top-conditioned sport fields, and you can see that by the number of different activities and national and provincial events that we have here. Broadbrook Park, now that we've enhanced the Broadbrook Recreation Park with a wetland trail, even on a cold day today, when everything is covered in snow, there are people out there walking their dogs and recreating. And then Yarmouth South Playground is a hotbed for activities in the summer. So, 20 years of recreation, joint leisure services is what it was initially called, now Joint Yarmouth Recreation, and looking forward to 20 more. And I've had a few people in the past couple of years asking about possibly a reunion of recreation staff, and I think there's going to be some planning in the works for maybe some kind of a reunion this year. So, as far as growing our tax base and being a more open, I don't know how more open we can be. We're using social media, to the best of our knowledge, very well, with various Facebook sites around active living and recreation. We're spreading the word on the good stuff happening for recreation, and our physical activity coordinator isn't from the Yarmouth area, but one of the first things she said within her week of moving to Yarmouth is, "What an awesome place for a small town with lots of opportunities." So, I think if we keep doing the things that we're doing, then obviously seniors will want to move here and retire here, and when professional people move in or people move in for whatever their circumstance, I think one of the first things they do is check out where the schools are, playgrounds, and minor sport opportunities. So, that's all I had. If there's any questions, I didn't do seven minutes, but I think I was around three.
Good job. Counselor Langel?
Well, it's my usual thingy. I did send to council a few minutes ago a copy of what I'm about to talk about, and brought this up last year, and hearing your comments, Frank, so don't throw anything at me. I really had a problem, if you recall, last year with the summer day camp registration fees. I'm looking at the pamphlet right now on my screen. I'm like the mayor. I never throw anything out. And $60 per week per kid, $12 per day. And I brought this up last year, that the concern I had is that it was causing some issues with other groups like the YMCA and others who were trying to offer similar programs, et cetera. And at that point, if you recall, we had a discussion as to the amount, because, I don't know, like, I've had a couple of kids, and my kids are now in their 20s, and, man, I wish when they were five or eight, I was able to pay $12 a day for care for them, because that is one heck of a bargain. And I'm wondering, can we look at that at all? Because to me, that is a pretty low fee, and not only that, but nobody can compete with you. I mean, you guys, you're ruling the roost there. Once those kids' names are filled up, and I've heard that parents are out there lined up at 6:00 in the morning to get ready for that day, et cetera. So, it is a concern of mine, because it's been expressed to me by other operators who would like to offer that service, you know, to the residents as well, and they just can't compete with our services. So, I just wanted to bring that up again.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. We've tried to keep our program fees low so that we can accommodate low-income families as well as higher-income families. We regularly send people to other summer camp providers in the municipality of Argyle, which have very similar fees to us. The Boys and Girls Club, who have very similar fees to us. If it's the YMCA that's the issue, then I guess there are different opportunities for them at the Y that we don't have in a gym or in a hall, but we definitely can look at those fees again.
And just as a secondary, I mean, and I appreciate the idea, I mean, for slow-income families, $12 is good, and I'm not discouraging that, but there are ways that we can also... I do know that there are some people who are not in low-income families who do have children in your programs, who have relatively deep pockets, if you know what I mean. And I don't know whether it's something you and your staff could look at, some kind of a partnership with community services or whatever. Yeah, I hear you on that. I mean, there are some families in this town that would love to use your services. They couldn't afford the $12 a day. I'd love to see us be able to accommodate those kids in your program. On the other hand, it really irks me that I know of people who are significantly higher income, their children, who can afford to pay extra, will go this route as well. So, I'm just hoping that we can have a balance in there. And I know it puts a little burden on you, but in these times of finances, I'm just throwing it out again.
Yeah, it's no burden. We do, with the $12 fee, we do subsidize a number of children already, currently, that can't afford, so we can look at those fees again. No problem.
Any more questions for Frank?
Thank you.
If it pleases you, I'd like to get a paper copy of the presentation to the councillors.
Certainly. Thank you.
What did you mention in here? Paper? That's not very environmentally friendly. Recycled paper? What?
Recycled paper. I love it. Thank you.
Might be a good thing I brought paper copies. Technology, it's over.
Ken, did you send something? Because I didn't get it. I didn't get it. Did you get it?
I don't know. I have to get back in the office.
Big Brother's watching.
Could be a problem.
No, I control Big Brother. He's not watching.
I think so.
I didn't get it.
See if you sent it to the mayor account.
Okay.
If anyone doesn't know, my colleague, this is Sharon LeBlanc. She's our education coordinator at Waste Check, and she's going to keep me on track here today, particularly now that the technology's not working in my favor. I appreciate you giving us a few moments this afternoon, seeing your agenda. We'll try and stick to our 10-minute timeframe. Who are we? If anyone doesn't know, Region 7. The province of Nova Scotia's broken up into seven waste management regions. We're known as Region 7, and we're Waste Check, and we're composed of the six municipal units in Yarmouth and Digby County. We are, in fact, a wholly-owned municipal corporation. Recently, Waste Check approved a strategic action plan, and this is actually the continuation of a plan that was started three years ago, and was very successful. In that, that plan helped us to achieve the lowest disposal rates in the province of Nova Scotia for three consecutive years, and also helped us to win the Mobius Environmental Award for Region or Municipality Year, two out of those three years. We have been cautioned we won't win again sooner, the other municipalities won't play, but we've been very successful up till now. There's no time to go through that plan today, although I did just give you a copy of it. But what we did do was we just pulled some of the objectives out of our plan and show how they line up with the goals that the town has recently identified. One of your goals is more open and inviting, growing the economy. One of our objectives is to work on our collaborative futures and endeavors. A good example of that is our community litter program. We're going to continue to offer that program. We also hope to continue to be involved with communities in Bloom, and we feel that meets your goal by promoting litter cleanups and community beautification, helps keep the environment clean, making the area more inviting to residents, businesses, and tourists, and this increases the community pride and gives the town, makes the town a more inviting place to live or visit. Another one of our goals is to, I'm sorry, one of our objectives and your goals, inspiring and enable influencers. An example of this would be our Business of the Month program, which inspires businesses to be leaders in waste production. We feel that helps meet your goal by giving businesses and other venues advertise or promote their businesses and grow the local economy, provides bragging rights or a sense of pride for the business, inspires other businesses to participate, keeping their stores and businesses clean and green. Another one of our objectives is to incubate and accelerate green entrepreneurs, best practices, and technologies, promote the use of green technologies for waste reduction. We feel that helps meet your goal by helping local businesses explore new marketing opportunities and technologies that are appealing to consumers or clients and help grow the local economy in an innovative way. Saving money and being more efficient, one of our objectives is behavioral changes through enforcement and compliance. We plan to continue on with our current enforcement and compliance initiatives, including illegal dump site investigations, bylaw enforcement, rejection follow-ups, curbside inspections, burning complaints, and databasing all those reports. We feel that helps meet your goal by making our waste diversion more efficient, by increasing compliance from our residents and businesses. This also helps save money through diversion. Unfortunately, not all behaviors are changed through positive reinforcement, so we feel enforcement program, a compliance program, will continue to be needed. Another of our objectives is our communication strategy. We'll be promoting the My Waste mobile app. This free app includes detailed pickup schedule with optional reminders, easy what-goes-where search, important local contacts at your fingertips, information on your local waste-handling facilities, details on special events, and more. We feel this helps meet the goal by making communication about waste programs more efficient and making it easily accessible and up-to-date, help reach a larger audience in a more convenient way. We should also mention that we're providing the My Waste app in a much more cost-effective way, because we're providing it for the six municipal units. The pricing structure for the app is based on population levels, and we're able to provide this service for the six municipal units at a cost significantly less than it would cost the six units to do it on their own. Again, with our communication strategy, Waste Check plans to create and provide information kits for various sectors, including specified information kits for municipalities, municipal staff, and municipal councillors. These kits would include information that groups can provide to residents who contact them, such as commonly asked questions and answers, collection information, directory of phone numbers of who to call at Waste Check for issues, and a list of the services that Waste Check provides. We feel this meets the goal by making the process of communicating with residents more efficient for municipal staff, and it also allows Waste Check to be more efficient in following up on any information or complaints that are passed back to us. Our education programs. These Waste Check education programs also make waste management systems more efficient, increase diversion, and therefore save money. Event greening, public displays at festivals and exhibitions, presentations to community groups, schools, and businesses, participation in the regional parades with Mr. Greenbin, business visits, curbside visits, and community outreach. Some of our other initiatives, our Waste Check Club 300, which is a positive recognition program for individuals and organizations that we feel go above and beyond the call of duty in helping us meet our goals. We're going to continue education in all sectors. We're going to continue doing rejection follow-ups and handing out good job stickers when we find people who are doing a really good job. Absolutely, sir.
You don't mind me asking you the question now, dear?
Not at all.
Okay, great. I've noticed, going around different times, and I get some calls sometimes, people are... I don't know if they're making the mistake, or it's probably the only bag they have left for that day, and I've done it once or twice myself. I didn't have a clear bag to put whatever in, and some people put bottles, we'll say, chocolate milk bottles and different other things, in a blue bag, and it gets a sticker on it. Am I correct by saying that, if it's in a blue bag?
If their waste isn't sorted properly, sorry, then there's a chance the hauler will place a sticker on it.
Yeah, okay. For instance, today, I noticed by where I live, there was a bag of garbage and recyclables. But the recyclables, I know that, and this person should know that, in a blue bag, if I'm correct by saying this, there was chocolate milk containers in there, plastic ones, in a blue bag. Would that be the proper bag for them to be in?
Yes, that's correct.
They would be in that bag?
Yes.
They're not garbage?
No, sir.
No, so they would go in that bag?
Yeah.
Okay.
And one of the good things about, if there is a good thing about having your garbage rejected, is it does provide a good educational avenue for us, because the haulers, if they reject the bag, are supposed to report that address back to us, and then we actually send staff out to knock on the door and talk to the people and see if we can help them figure out what they've done wrong and how to do it right in the future.
Okay, so now, if that, let's reverse that and say that was in a clear bag. Would you reject that?
Again, there's some discretion on the part of the hauler as to what they reject and what they don't. We generally recommend that you don't get your garbage rejected for making one mistake. Usually, rejection is saved for if it doesn't appear that the resident is making an effort to do it properly.
But what would be the difference between that resident with that clear bag and that blue bag, other than clear and blue? I mean, it's going to the recycle plant. It's taking apart, isn't it, or not?
The rationale for the use of the blue bag is it makes it easier for the hauler to distinguish between where the bag is supposed to go, so the clear bag is only supposed to be used for solid waste.
Garbage.
And it makes it a lot easier for the hauler, particularly this time of year, if there's snow on the bags and stuff, they don't have to hold up every bag and look and figure out if the resident meant for that to be recycling or garbage.
But normally, you would think that they wouldn't... Would they put a sticker on that and keep it for another week? Make that person keep it for another week?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good. Thank you. Continue.
Thank you. We also have a presence in social media. We have a Facebook page, and April 1, we're launching our Twitter account, although you'll have to ask someone younger on the staff what that is, because I'm not really sure. We have a Leaders by Example video series that we completed in 2012. We also do Holler Appreciation Days each year to let the haulers know that we appreciate the good work that they do. We also organize special events, Earth Day, Compost Awareness Week, Environment Week, Waste Reduction Week, and also we do green cart delivery and repair. So, to get to the bottom line, what does all these services cost? Waste Check's budget typically runs at about $600,000 a year. Now, most of our funding comes through the Resource Recovery Fund programs, but the reality is, is they're not immune from financial pressures either. We're expecting a significant reduction in our funding this fiscal year. In fact, we won't know for some time the full magnitude, but we're expecting somewhere in the vicinity of $60,000 less in funding this year. That having been said, our municipal contribution that we're seeking from our six municipal partners will remain constant at $100,000 this year, which is compared to what, sorry, the same as it has been in most previous years. Last year, it was lower than that, but typically, it has been $100,000 a year. For the town of Yarmouth, that means about $16,000. Now, in order to be able to keep our request for funding at that $100,000 level, we have significantly, or we've proposed significant cost reductions, spending reductions for next year, travel for staff and board members has been cut in half. Our advertising budget has been reduced by about 30%. Office equipment and supplies, about 40%. Everywhere we found the nickel that we can cut, we've cut it, and next week, the six CAOs have graciously agreed to sift through our finances and see if I missed any nickels and help us cut those, too. So, we're doing everything we can to maintain and actually reduce our costs in this difficult financial climate. So, that's the gist of our presentation this afternoon. If it pleases you, I'll take any questions now.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have another question. On your green carts, and there's only one size. You only have the one size?
No, there's two sizes.
Two sizes. Is the public aware of the two sizes that you have?
I think so, because we get a lot of calls, and people generally know what size they want, and... they want, and we even get calls from people saying they want to change sizes, they either want the smaller one or the bigger one.
Because I, I notice in, in the neighborhood where I, where I live in, and I noticed that the senior, and the senior lady, she's always, she has a hard job dragging that out, so now that I know this, uh, perhaps go over there and suggest to her if she might be able to get a smaller one.
Absolutely. Uh, originally, when the program started many years ago, we only had the larger carts.
Yeah.
So the vast majority of carts that are out there are the larger ones, but we get a lot of calls, particularly from senior citizens, asking if they can have the smaller cart.
There's no cost to that, they just trade theirs?
Absolutely not, no.
Trade the one that they have?
Correct.
And your number, you have a card with you?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get one before you leave, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Any more questions for Waste Check? Or good? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor or Senator?
Hey, Gil.
Welcome, Gil.
Thank you. I did provide a, a brief, a written brief, and, uh, so I'm not going to, to read the whole thing to you. If you have any questions regard, that regard, I'm more than happy to answer them. Um, I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one, I think probably the CAO set the stage for, uh, for where we're at today just by outlining, um, you know, the demographic changes that have taken place in the, in the economy, the economic environment right now, so those are the str, the stresses that the Mariner Center is facing. Um, we think that the Mariner Center is a tremendous success story when it comes to being a partnership as far as partnering with another municipality, and, uh, we enjoy the, 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 um, the fact that we do have two partners. Um, it's, it's been a, a pleasant surprise, I think, for most people that the, that it's worked so well. This year has been particularly difficult for us, and, and mainly be, you know, one of the main reasons is, is the weather. Um, you know, with the, the lower temperatures, of course, our heating costs are up, but we get the, the double whammy when we have a storm day because we lose all our revenues, and then we have the cost of snow removal, which are probably about twice our budgeted amount, so, uh, we get, we get a double, uh, double whammy on, on storm days, and we've had lots in this winter, as you know. As far as, as budgeting, uh, we're in the process, we've had several finance meetings, we're trying to pull together the, the budget for this year. Uh, probably one or two, uh, meetings in the, in the future to fine-tune that, and I would suggest that probably by the March meeting, we'll be prepared to, to pass a budget, uh, to forward on. We don't expect, or anticipate any huge, uh, changes from, from last year. Uh, we're probably on track. Uh, we, we pared it down over the years as, basically as thin as we can get it, and, uh, most of the things that are controllable are being controlled, and we've investigated any cost-saving measures we can and any, um, any ways to reduce expenditures, so, uh, basically, we're facing, uh, the only thing we can do now, I guess, is to try to, to market the facility and see if we can attract more business to the community and more uses of the facility, uh, through rentals, facility rentals.
So, so under, under C on the back page there, the marketing strategy, is that being worked on? Is that done? Is that, I was interested in that.
Well, yes, and there have been some delays, uh, but we are in the process, I, we've approved the, uh, the text, actually, within the last couple of weeks, we've approved the text for the new marketing brochure. We've, we've, we've elected to, uh, to do an online brochure, so we, because, uh, number one, it's cheaper to circulate, you can, you know, hit one button and send out 30,000 copies if you like. Secondly, it's, uh, it's a lot easier to amend an online brochure, so it's going to be a, a brochure where you can actually go in, look at the pictures, look at the pictures, turn the pages, the contact information will be there, uh, with direct links back to the facility, so, uh, through contact links back to the facility, so it should be, uh, a real boon in the future for us to, to attract business to the community.
Good. Councilor Mooney?
Thank you, Gil. Good job, and, and just from what I look around across the province, you know, the, um, what you've done, trying to cut costs, is, is really helping us out, us and the municipality of Yarmouth, our partner in the facility. If you look what Truro's, what's the cost of Truro in the run of the years? $700,000 to run their facility, and I know Queen's Place, and I look at some of the other ones that are running into large, large deficits. I know you guys are really got your nose to the grindstone, but I got a couple of questions. One, Gil, is on, uh, I think I looked at it on a financial statement, uh, not in this one, but you sent out to all the councillors is, is, uh, and you can do this off the top of your head, probably, is concerts. What's the story on, we always in contact, or how's that work? I know they're tough, I know because we're not, we're too big for some and not big enough for others.
And that's the problem.
And they're price sensitive.
It's kind of a niche market. We rely on the promoters, of course, and there's several in the Maritimes that, uh, that bring, you know, touring artists to the communities, but, uh, basically, we're just a little bit too small for them to come this far. Uh, and what I mean by that is we, we can't provide the number of seats that they need. They'll travel to Yarmouth, but they want to put 2,000 to 2,500 people, uh, in a, in a concert venue. Um, the problem is, we can't do that. Um, we're maxed out at about 1,800 really for a concert, so, uh, that's not attractive to a lot of, uh, the promoters. We, we do pick up, the ones that we do pick up are the ones that, um, need to, um, I guess guarantee a performer, say, 10 concert locations, or they won't come. And so what they'll do is they'll include Yarmouth in the link, in the mix, uh, for that purpose. But we've, we've done some, um, pretty significant improvements over the last few years to improve the venue, uh, not so much the, you know, we've, we're maxed out as far as the seats, but we, we've made it really attractive with things like our, our stage and our, uh, the way we can dress the place up. So, we do get, uh, lots of compliments on that, because many facilities can't do, can't provide the, um, the ambiance the, that we can provide. So, uh, it's just difficult right now, everybody's in the same boat, we're, we're looking for it, and we've got our, we've got our hook in the water, but we just haven't had nibbles lately.
Well, you're just looking at the Shania Twain concert over in PEI, which is an open concert, but you're looking at ticket prices, I think, from 89 to $200, so it's price-sensitive market, too.
Absolutely, and, and in order to do, to attract a Shania Twain, you have to have significantly more seats than we can provide.
Well, yeah, and that's going to be an outdoor facility. And the other question is, uh, one of the assets that you acquired last year after the Redwood Cup, is, uh, what do you foresee for our outdoor hockey rink?
Um, we actually haven't given it a lot of thought. That was, uh, that was something that was sort of, um, thrown at us at the last minute, and, uh, even though we weren't the entity that was probably most, well, we just thought it was an opportunity that we shouldn't miss. Uh, the, the rink, uh, that you're talking about became available at a, at a significantly reduced price. Uh, they were willing to leave it in the community for, I think we paid about $6,000 for it. And, uh, although we're not sure we had, we had no budget for it, we just thought that it was an asset that, uh, that we couldn't afford to let go. I think it was probably worth, you know, probably in the area of $30,000, and it's in excellent condition, um, and we know that we can use it in the future. If we can't use it, certainly Frank and his group can use it, so.
And I see Charles sitting behind you, I just wonder, and I know next year, they're going to have qualifying again for the Redwood Cup, and I just wonder if we could set that up even in the parking lot or somewheres, and if Charles is, he's over there listening, um.
Absolutely, and our staff, our staff have actually, uh, were involved in the setting up and tearing down of that rink so that we'd have the training, uh, we'd be able to do it, so.
And I think, you know, you're not going to have a, a size of the Redwood Cup again for the next couple of years. I know they, they love their, love their area, but, um, if you can be host to some of the play-down communities, people come from across Nova Scotia, and they're going to still spend room nights in Yarmouth, and I think it was a great pickup.
And with the return of the ferry, there's also the international opportunity.
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Gil.
Thanks, Phil. Good. Any more questions for Gil?
Thank you.
Sandy, you got a, Councilor Dennis?
Um, yes, I, I just wanted to know how things are working out with you and the Agricultural Society.
Um, well, we have, we met on-site, uh, just a short time, well, three weeks ago, to start the planning for this year's exhibition and to, um, to determine how we can lay out the site that will best suit their needs. Um, and we, uh, we intend to meet with them as a board in the near future, because we've only been meeting with one or two people. But, um, from my perspective, it's, it's a very, it was very positive, the last, uh, interaction that we had, and I think we're moving forward. Uh, we, we determined now that, uh, the dirt cannot win the facility, it's not a good use of the facility, and that there are ways to, uh, to have a perfectly good and, and exciting and dynamic exhibition without, you know, filling the arena up with dirt. It ha, it occurs in Lawrence Town, it occurs in Bridgewater, and they're two of the best exhibitions you could attend anywhere in this province.
Okay.
So we'll duplicate their efforts.
Good. Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil.
YASTA! What up, Charles? Did, now Mitch isn't here for the airport? Nope, okay. And Greg, you said wasn't, couldn't make it? Okay, Charles, welcome.
Okay, um, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Charles Robichaud, and I've been employed as a Tourism Development Officer with YASTA for about a year and a half. And, um, as of January 2nd, I've been, um, the interim general manager, um, since Julie Walter's departure, so we're keeping things moving, so I'll give you an idea of the, um, guess just run through the projects that are going on right now and things that we're looking to do in the future and how they would affect the, the four councils' goals. So YASTA's mandate is to grow tourism through product development and marketing. Um, just to give you a couple of numbers here on economic develop, development, um, throughout the province, um, $225 million in tax revenues were generated by the tourism industry in Nova Scotia in 2012, and direct expenditures from tourism totaled 2.02 roughly billion dollars in 2010, and there's over 40,000 tourism jobs in Nova Scotia, so it's a, a big, I look at it as a export industry, because we're selling to a tourist, and, um, it's, it, obviously, our mandate, um, we use the provinces, um, I guess, on marketing initiatives, as in we target to three target markets. Those are the culinary enthusiasts, the cultural enthusiasts, and the outdoor enthusiasts. So these have been seen as being the, uh, the high-yield market, the visitors who come for those reasons, stay longer, and generally spend more. So we produce a, um, a visitor's guide every year. This year, we're producing 100,000 copies, that's going to be a, onboard of the Nova Star ship, and it's, um, it's sent out to all the VICs and all the tourism businesses, and, um, that has been, uh, I think that got printed at the beginning of January, so those are being distributed now. We have, um, a fully bilingual website, and we average about 3,000 hits a month on that. We do regional projects, one of them is called Living Wharves, those are the fishing demonstrations that happens, um, twice a week in Yarmouth next year on the Ice Plant Wharf, that's one, a top 25 Nova Scotia attraction as well. We do music de la bae, or music by the sea, again, this is a seven-day-a-week, um, I guess you can call it experiential tourism. We have two locations in the town now, Rothers and Sip Cafe. Um, we, we manage the, um, Yarmouth and Acadian Shores VIC section, so there's a section right now in the VIC where we have, um, an employee that will be working there this summer, specifically focusing on Yarmouth and the Acadian Shores. Um, the VIC will be, um, they will be renovating, I just, uh, met with the province, and we're going to work together, and again, this comes to a saving money, we're going to work together with their existing technology and our employee so that we have access to the province as a resource, but we keep our brand or our, um, I guess I could say, um, our name out there within the provincial VIC. One big project that we are working on now, it's called TMR, that's Total Market Readiness, this is a two-year business improvement program, um, and again, this was, um, the reason we can do this is leverage funds, so that's one big thing that we do, is leverage funds through ACOA and with the province ERTT, um, that is being managed by, um, Tourism Development Officer Neil Mackenzie, and we have 41 participants in this program. 19 of these participants are from the town of Yarmouth. Do a lot of social media, we have over 1,200 Facebook likes now. Graphic design, recently with, um, because of the skillset of one of our Tourism Development Officers, Neil Mackenzie, we can offer, um, graphic design and do in-house graphic design for our programs, that's another way we save money and cut down on, cut down on the bills in, instead of outsourcing. Group sales, um, again, this was, um, there's a position, Rick Allwright is the Group Sales Coordinator for YASTA, and, um, one, um, I guess our, um, one big project of last year was to play on the Redwood Cup, so again, this was a partnership between the province, ACOA, um, you know, the Room Levy Group, um, again, with leveraged funds, um, to sell more room nights. Do, um, we have a, um, marketing ask now to ACOA and the province as well as the task team, and again, this is another example of leveraging funds, which is something that we do, so we're hoping to hear about that, um, very shortly, and with that, we create partnerships. We have a great partnership with Bay Fairies, um, we provide them with entertainment, they in turn let us, um, use some of their, or be a part of their pre-marketing, onboard marketing. Um, we're currently, uh, working on a partnership with Nova Star Cruises, because we want to, we want to intercept the visitor, before they come here, we need to be a part of pre-marketing, we, we need to create tourism awareness for the region, and, um, through partnerships, that's, um, a big part of what YASTA does. Mention a couple more things, we do attend trade shows, um, we've attended, um, the Boston Globe Trade Show, we'll be attending the AAA Marketplace in, uh, Foxborough outside of Boston, and the Ottawa Travel Show, and again, um, I will be partnering with Nova Star Cruises for the Ottawa show, so, um, maybe with those savings, we can, um, actually, we can get more out of the show, for example, we'll be hosting what's called the Scotiable, which is targeted to residents of Ontario who are from Nova Scotia and in turn become ambassadors for our region. So this is permitting us to create partnerships with, uh, this is, um, actually with a white point, um, but by creating partnerships, we can cost share, we can, you know, keep, keep costs down. And another initiative that's come out of TMR, which would be really directly related to the more open, and to be more open and inviting, is the Best of Yaz, which is a Best of online contest, um, where residents can vote, and we can market and create, I, I guess, create, um, awareness of quality through, through TMR. So with that program and with this, um, I guess, contest, um, it, it lets us promote quality and up the level of quality, um, for the tourism operators in the region, so, um, and, um, I guess, I guess the whole, the way I see YASTA incorporated and all of this is through partnerships and through leveraging funds with the province and, um, with, um, federal. So, um, I'll, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, I might not have all the answers to all your questions, but, um, if there's any information you want from me after this is done, I will send you all an email with my contact information, then I can get that to you if there's anything you need.
Thank you, Charles. Councilor Lanzel?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, Charles, um, one thing that's kind of puzzled me, and maybe you can answer it, and, because I know our town has invested in it, and maybe a mistake has been made here with regard to it. YASTA is not doing Saltscapes this year, is there, uh, is that a bad thing? Should we not be doing Saltscapes? I mean, we, in the past, uh, Saltscapes has been very valuable, um, there's a huge number of people go through it, but I noticed this year, YASTA has pulled out of Saltscapes, in which pretty well removes a major marketing venue, it would seem to me, for Central Nova Scotia, for Halifax and for the Maritimes, and instead, you've opted to go to, um, Boston and New York or Kukamunga, wherever. Um, i- is there something about YASTA that this council should, I'm sorry, about Saltscapes that we should be aware of? Like, you obviously didn't make that decision lightly. We, as a council, bought two booths and are about to invest money to promote our town there, but, and I do notice other communities have done that too, but in discussions, i- was that an error? I mean, you're the professional, you're the tourism professional, uh, is Saltscapes maybe a bad thing for us to do?
Um, I would say Saltscapes is not a bad thing for YASTA to do. Um, I think in light of the ferry service, the decision was made to, um, use the funds we had, which was, we only had funds for three trade shows, and the decision was made to attend the trade shows, um, the two in New England, because of all the promotion that Nova Star will be doing there, as well as an Ontario show, um, and Saltscapes, um, was not chosen as a show because it has local or community representat, representation there anyway. For example, last year, we went, but the town was there, Argyle was there, and Claire was there, um, and that would be the main reason why we would, we're not doing Saltscapes. However, Saltscapes is a great show, um, just in, for this year with our budget, that would be the reasoning behind not doing Saltscapes.
Uh, second question, thank you.
Buck, so we go to Boston, so how many thousand people did you service in Boston, uh, at the Boston show, roughly? Because we, I haven't heard, I'm curious how, what the response was there to the, yeah, yeah- Because we, I haven't heard, I'm curious what the response was there to the, yeah, YASTA did its own booth, its own presence, I suspect?
The way that this show works, actually, you don't actually have your own booth because this is a provincial delegation. So YASTA, Yarmouth and Acadian Shores is there with the province. So we do have, it was more of a, I guess, pedestal with our brochure. We didn't have a booth per se like Saltscapes. Now, Neil Mackenzie attended that one. He gave over 1,000 YASTA visitor's guide. There were, I do believe, 22,000 attendees at the show. And he probably, we like to have one-on-one conversations at trade shows because really when you speak to people one-on-one, I think that, that's the way to do it, as opposed to just throwing out brochures and saying, you know. So he, he probably spoke to over 500 people one-on-one and gave over 1,000 brochures. And we're also distributing the task team brochures. So we're kind of giving out a bit more collateral, you know, because again, it comes down to partnerships and helping each other. So I think, I would say that that was definitely a success. And the AAA show, I think they're expecting about 24,000 people. And it's the same idea, it's a provincial delegation that goes. So Nova Scotia has its own setup and we're a part of that.
And, I mean, again, I'm a bit of a media type, as you know, Charles. I can't rationalize, and I'm just curious again, or maybe something's being planned that I don't know about. Our community scored, in my opinion, a huge coup in getting on the cover of Doers and Dreamers. Yet it's probably one of the most quietly kept things going in this area or in Nova Scotia that we're on Doers and Dreamers. Is there any plans by YASTA to maybe, I don't even think the YASTA website has mentioned very much of the Doers and Dreamers. You know what I mean? The fact that this, this icon has made it. I mean, I remember when Peggy's Cove got on it a few years ago. Holy mackerel, the whole world knew that Peggy's Cove was there. My God, here, there's not even a whimper. Like, I thought for sure there'd be like politician or two around, or the mayor, I know Mayor Mooney, you're like me, we found out, we found out about it. It was by accident, it came up. Is there any thought? I mean, to me, this is a huge marketing opportunity. I know that the Yarmouth light doesn't quite fit within that Acadian culture thingy that, that we try to promote, but to me, it's, it's a major landmark to have there. Are we going to do anything to kind of say, hey, wow, this is really great? We've, we've done a real tourism coup. It's the first time anything in Yarmouth has ever been featured on Doers and Dreamers. If I look at the, I think Mayor, former Mayor Mooney will comment with Pete's Frutee a few years ago, if I remember the hoover on that. I'm glad we don't get that bad PR. But on the other hand, this is something, I think, really good. So what are your plans for that?
That's a great question and I actually hadn't thought of that, that deep. And basically, what, the one thing we have been doing with the picture on the doors, all our advertising, for example, we took out a two-page spread in the onboard magazine, Nova Star. And we do have access to the exact picture that the province has, they gave us access to use that in our marketing. So we're strategically linking our marketing to that cover. But as far as media, that's something that I'll have to look in. I should do a press release and you're totally right that that's been overlooked because of other, you know, we've been pretty busy, but that's definitely something that we're going to look into, appreciate the...
I like that press release idea. No, really, like to really get, get right there.
Totally agree.
Good. Councillor Mackay-Zet?
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, thank you for coming to give this presentation today. It was a great presentation. And my, my only suggestion to whoever takes over the helm is that they come before council a little bit more often and let us know what a great organization that you guys really are and what you are really doing for the three or four municipal units. And that the taxpayers' money is being well-spent promoting the town and other municipal units. I don't think I can stress it enough because given times when YASTA has been a part of, part of funding that Yarmouth does along with the other municipal units, I can sit here and safely say that, I can't remember, I can count on my fingers how many times that there's been presentations given to council on where you are, what you're doing, where you're going, and, and some information. I know we have committee members on there, they bring back information and stuff, and we ask them questions, but sometimes we don't know the questions to ask, rather than have the manager, assistant manager, whoever, give us what you are doing. You, you fulfill that today. I just hope that whoever takes over the helm fulfills that even more at these committee, committee of the whole meetings or whatever. And feel free to come anytime and, and meet with council at any time to update us and enlighten us what is happening, what's going on. So thank you for coming this afternoon.
That, that's a great comment. And we've, we've actually been discussing this in the past couple of months in the office, that it's something that we want to do more because we have, I guess, an ex-councillor working with us. So he, he brought up that point and I totally agree. And that's definitely something I'll pass on to work to whoever takes over the general manager position. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Charles. Good?
Well, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so that's it for the Directors and Managers. We are at Grants to Organizations. So the Grants to Organizations, what happens here? We've only ever done it once, so we just...
We approved the list of grants for organizations.
That's what happens. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Questions?
I would only ask that you, that you allow us to round to the nearest $5 because some of the amounts are a little... 10? Linda wants 10, so we'll go with 10.
Okay. I have to say, I, when I got this, I looked, okay. We really are all on the same page. But, but, you know, a couple of the zeros and I thought, my heart's pounding, thinking, no, but anyway, it does. Yeah, we do. Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. CAO review. I, we were going to do this yearly and I just, I didn't know, I just thought I'd bring it up and maybe entertain a motion to set a date. We want to do that? The CAO review. We want to do that yearly? You still want to do that yearly? Okay? Okay, councillor, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, Your Worship, that we do the CAO review, the review of her, the annual review of her CAO before the 30th of April 2014. That'll give us some flexibility and then we can draw up a date. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Can you make arrangements between now and then? Okay. So moved by councillor Langel, can I have a seconder, please? Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Question's been ca... This hinges partly on the budget. Questions have been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. That's carried. Depends how the, depends where the budget comes in. Okay, I'm going to review signage while I put that in there simply because we were having discussions about, but that'll go under municipal planning. So I'll take that out. Bump out. Who added bump outs? Okay, councillor Langel, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. The, this whole business, we, we discussed it kind of. We put a proposal before staff at the last meeting just to look at this. And I'm a little confused because I did read, and I think the Chair of Waterfront Development, that in their budget, they're doing bump outs. Apparently, there's two bump outs being planned there. And I wonder if we're bumping out a lot of bump outs here and making sure that we're all bumping on the same page. I just love playing with puns. But I'm wondering, because I'm looking at what Waterfront is doing is a permanent structure, I'm assuming is what they're looking at, and what Communities in Bloom was suggesting is more of a temporary structure. So we have a bit of a problem there. So I'm just wondering how that's going to come about.
Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, Worship. I believe where you saw it in the waterfront package is, is in a long list of potential future projects. So there is no, I don't believe there's any money allocated within the current ACOA project. So it would have to be in a future project and, and there are many items on that list. So it isn't even necessarily yet determined to be a priority. It's just one of the many things taken out of the ecistics plan to be considered.
Okay, go ahead, councillor.
And I do know the CAO is just absolutely to the nth degree. Have we had a chance to look at that? On, has Dave had a chance to look to see what we're looking at for costing? Where, and the reason I'm asking is we're putting together an ask and we're going to slap that bump out amount in that ask. And I'd like to try to get that thing to bed before the first of next week, if we could, so the council could take a look at it before the mayor sends it up.
I have, I've passed the information along to, to Dave and discussed it with him and I don't know if Dave is anywhere near a budget number, but... So your, your timeline is next week?
Thank you, Worship. I think in talking with, with Her Worship on, I think it was Wednesday morning, we kind of would like to see us get that into government like with, before the break, which is, as you know, next week. And there were three or four items that are in that, that ask that we're looking at. And that is one item that we'd like to sneak in if we could. So even if we had a ballpark figure from, from Dave simply saying how much it would cost, I mean, they only can say no, what the heck, you know? And if we can put a, even a ballpark would work quite nicely. And then when, then when Her Worship sends the, the request in, she'd have at least the, the numbers in place.
Good, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think the way to approach this is to give you a ballpark number that would do, that would do several. And when we get to the actual tendering process, if we, you know, if the unit pricing is, is higher than expected, we just simply do fewer, if it's lower, then we do more.
Good. Okay. Fuel and oil tender, that's you, councillor Mooney.
Question to the CAO, what do we do on fuel and oil? Do we tender that or how often do we tender it or what's the process? I, I was asked that question yesterday.
CAO?
That's a, that's a good one, because I don't have that one on the top of my head, to be honest. I'll look into when the last time we tendered for, for fuel was and advise council.
I think it might be a good idea to look at that, maybe every, probably every year, probably with something like that, or every two years. You come back with an answer, please, and...
I, I will bring back an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Do you need a motion, you're good? Yeah, motion helps.
I'll make a motion that we get staff to review fuel and oil tenders.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Alrighty, we are on, now I've got a couple, let's start All Hands on Deck. That was you, councillor Mooney.
And it's just a question, Your Worship, on, on conversation with several individuals on what the town's role and responsibility is with All Hands on Deck. Now, some people are waiting to improve their properties, but they think they're going to get free paint and free labor to improve their properties. Some people have called me up and said after the, what happened down at the, at the Killen's property, here All Hands on Deck's going to want, now that we've did some things with our artisanal people, they said now we're going to turn around and ask those guys to paint free murals. Now, I know through the Waterfront Development Corporation with councillor MacLeod that anytime that the town requests any services, that they're always tendered and paid for. So I don't think that's a question, but there's going to have to be, differentiate between what the town of Yarmouth's responsibility is and what All Hands on Deck's responsibility is when it comes to cleanup, murals, you know, talking about the graffiti, you know, walls, all the other things. There should be a clear delineation between the two. And I don't think, I think the lines are blurred a little bit because every time something happens at the council table, oh, that's not All Hands on Deck. Wow. I know we've all bought into the philosophy of All Hands on Deck, which is community involvement is what it is, right? And it's nothing more than being a good citizen. But I think we're going to have to really differentiate between what All Hands on Deck is going to do and what the town of Yarmouth provides for services.
I agree. I agree. So, so the premise with the, with the All Hands on Deck is, is just that, community involvement and what, what can the community do? So I saw some of the postings with regard to the Killen Building and, and stuff like that. And I guess I didn't respond because it's not about the artisans, it's about businesses. So I didn't, I didn't respond to that bit. I saw another one, I saw another one where someone said, you know, well, it would cost $30,000 to paint a mural. But you know what? Here, here was the premise, well, we will draw those lines. Maybe you can sit down and help me draw it because it's just, it's so simple to me that the community can clean up. We don't have to pay the community to help clean up. We don't have to pay, pay people to do every single thing it takes to beautify and to kind of look after our own community. Like, people really, really want to step up. I wonder if the paint one didn't come from, there is a contest that's going to happen that Kent Building Supplies is putting on. And I know that they're going to have sales on paint and things like that, but they're also going to hand out before and after prizes. They've got $10,000 put up for that. But that is a private business that has put up money and said, you know what? We want to help the community too. So maybe we can, and, and as well, they've, they gave garbage bags, all the garbage bags that you can use if you're going to use them to help pick up litter and things like that. So maybe, I don't know, with the Communities in Bloom, I don't know how you get your garbage bags for your cleanups, but there are, there are those options. So the lines, the lines seem blurred at times. The premise is that the town of Yarmouth's part is to make sure that it, that we're here and available to ask those, answer those questions so that if people, for example, that cannon project, he can't go put a cannon on the waterfront just because it's a good idea. He needs to find, you know, waterfront, how does it work? How does the insurance work? What are the bylaws? So, so basically, in a nutshell, we're here for advice and those types of things. If a private business wants to donate a wall for a mural to be painted on and we have a youth or another artist or, or somebody that wants to come in and do that and, and somebody can provide the paint, then that's fine. But it's not for us to provide the paint, it's not for us to provide the space, but it would be up to us to say it's okay to do that. You know, if it's, if it hinges on a bylaw, does that make, does that clarify it more? More advice than anything.
It's all right.
Yep, you're good.
The other thing I was more worried about, and when you do things like that with painting and some other things with the cleanup, is liability. And, you know, the whole world revolves around insurance problems now. And if somebody's doing something on All Hands on Deck and doing a mural and goes up four feet on the ladder and comes down headfirst into a garbage can and cracks their skull, does the business owner cover that insurance cost? Does the town of Yarmouth cover the insurance cost? Who, who does that? Because that's going to be a concern. And it might not happen this year and hopefully it's not going to happen at all, but those things could happen.
They could happen. So Angela Collier looks after that particular one, the wall murals. And she's, she's asked those questions. She said, I need to find out about insurance and, and everything else. So, because you just can't have people climbing up on, climb, you're right. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with councillor's questions that he just asked because that was some of my concerns about the people going around, you know, doing, doing different works that, that our town employees already do. And they, they do the work for the, for the, for the taxpayers because they have training and they have certificates and all, what it takes for them to do what they're asked to do, their task. All Hands on Deck, if I remember correctly, you, the question was asked to you where you were at the chair, is it's not a town project or an incentive, it's, it's yours and yours alone and your company.
Not my company, no. It's just as the mayor, as the mayor, I just said, you know what? We, we just need to engage the community... the community, like, what can the community do? So what happened, one small example, is I'm getting phone calls from people that are taking their time to look up my number and call me and say, I saw a couple Tim Horton's cup on the street, somebody needs to clean those up. My answer was, pick them up yourself!
Go pick it up, go pick it up.
But you know what I mean? Like, those types of things. And so, so things were happening, because of this, basically, I think a lot of the questions were because of the boats coming, and the town looks kind of, you know, down and out and things like that, and it was, it was a constant, for me, maybe it's just because I was new, but it was a constant series of, the town needs to do this, and the town needs to do this, and my answer was, we need to provide basic services. If you would like to, you know, plant some flowers or things like, like, get together and do it.
That's fine, but we have, we have a community in Bloom that already does that. And we have, we have parks and recreation, we have people that work out to the, you know, shed over there, but, so, and anyway, it was, you had, you had said, and I, I think we all understood that, the purpose, it was yours, your thought, your idea, and it wasn't sanctioned by council, it wasn't a motion that was made around the council table.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't, yeah, that's what I thought. So I guess I'm on the same wavelength, and it's a really good idea, and it's working really well.
Yeah.
And it's got a lot of good press, and it's great. But what I'm a little worried about, and I think our CAO should be a little bit worried about, and I'm, I don't know if he is or not, I won't speak for him, but some people might have the misconception of how this is working, how it's gonna play out, whether it is a town incentive that, or project that we're doing with All Hands on Deck that is sanctioned by the town and is being run by the town, when in all fairness, it's not. It's not. And I'm kind of worried about where this could go and what could happen to it. And I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to see anything, I wouldn't want to see it go off the rail and people get hurt or injured with trying to do good work for the town. Every time somebody, somebody goes and picks up a bat or a cup or a package, I notice, I always notice our enforcer, our parking lot enforcement guy, when I see him on the street, I usually see him bending down, picking up stuff, always.
Yeah.
He does that, and I've noticed it, and he does that. But anyway, I'm just a little worried that maybe the wrong message is getting out there, perhaps the right message should get out there, your worship. I'm all for your project, I think it's a great thing. I like when I hear people talking about it, it's great, but it's gotta be put out there in what it was meant to be. And I think we ought to stress that, that people not just go do things on their own, they stick to the All Hands on Deck workshop that you had, and people put their names forward, and instead of coming here and going through the process, I think there might have to be another mechanism set up where they go through different channels other than here, just my thought, that's all, so they don't get the wrong idea that it is run by this town and council. That's just my thought.
So, no, good thought, and you're right. There's, the reason, the reason I say, like, when councillor Mooney asked that we need, if the town, if the town people want to step up and do extra, you know, there's places all over this country that are crying for...
Nobody's helping.
No, for people to do, to do extra. They're trying to engage their communities and things like that. So, so again, like, we just need to be available to say exactly what you're saying. Like, you just can't go out there willy-nilly and do whatever you want to do. There are laws and policies and rules and things like that, that, go ahead.
I'd just say one more, and I'll just wind this up.
Yes, you can.
I know you're, you're, you're working on having another, another meeting, and perhaps that will be the appropriate time to explain to the volunteers and the citizens that here's, here's what we're going to do, and this is how it's gonna take place, and here's how, where we're gonna go for all the information and whatever.
Yeah.
Okay? So I'll leave it at that.
So March 19th, I just got an email, I was just waiting for the Rod Grand Hotel, we'll do it at the Rod on the 19th, the follow-up. Councillor Langel, go ahead.
Thank you, just...
I'll be a doorman.
You were a doorman the last time. That worked.
I unfortunately was somewhere else. Anyway, yeah, literally. Anyway, thank you, your worship. Yeah, further to what councillor Mackay-Zip's saying, I mean, there are some things that are concerning me too, like, next week we have our Communities in Bloom, and one of the items we have is the annual cleanup, which Communities in Bloom does. It's been suggested to me that maybe that should be done by All Hands on Deck.
Oh, no.
You know, and like, this is, in fact, it's on the agenda to be discussed, it's what we should be doing, you know what I mean? And I don't want to, Clifford Hood had the greatest expression going, cross-piling sawdust over knot holes, and I don't like doing that. I really feel that we've all gotta somehow get on the same page and do what has to be done here. And I brought up earlier, for example, this, the Waterfront Development Corporation, my favorite topic is the trees down on Water Street, you know what I mean? If we can get everybody on the same page. So I hear what councillor Mackay-Zip and councillor Mooney are saying, and I just want to let you know I'm on the same page. I mean, we all want to work together. I've got a tremendous, excellent bodily of volunteers, councillor Dennis and myself, and councillor Mooney, we all sit on the committee, which is an awesome committee, and we've got some real dedicated people who really want to work for the betterment. So we'd like to keep them engaged as best as we can, so that sounds good to me.
So I'll just tell you too, that with regard to the Communities in Bloom, that we've had, obviously, a ton of people sign up and say, I'd love to do weeding or gardening or anything that I can do, but those names will go to you. It's gotta, you know what I mean? And it's not to, to give it to something that the town's doing, it's just to make it fit somewhere. So we'll make it work. Okay, good. So next is editorial. Did you want to still do that, councillor? Go ahead.
I might as well put both feet in my mouth. I read the edit, I might as well. Your worship, I was elected three times by the people of Yarmouth, and I've never had a personal agenda for or against anybody. My goal, being elected, first time as councillor, second as mayor, third time as councillor, I work for the betterment of the community of Yarmouth. And I think the editorial, I think, was taking a shot at some people sitting around this table. Last week, I kind of jotted some notes. I can give you people, I can give you a personal agenda, I'll give you my agendas for lower taxes, better water, better recreational facilities, better governance, better streets, better sidewalks. The list can go on and on, you know? We stuck our neck out last council, we did projects like the Broadbrook project, that has been sitting on the back burner for seven years. Did the Milton Dam, we did two or three wastewater projects. We did the $5 million project on Pleasant Street. There's, I can go on and on about things we did. To say that I have, or insinuate that I have a personal agenda sitting here at this table, your worship, if you read the article, did you read it?
No, right.
Read it, and I'd like to have your opinion, you think myself or anybody else around this table has a personal agenda? I really, really, I was really disappointed in that article by, if Fred wrote it or whoever wrote the article, I was really disappointed, really, really disappointed. And I think, I don't know if it's taking shots at anybody, but I think it was uncalled for, it was unprofessional, I think it was unbalanced, and I think any news article should be balanced, and I take exception to it. I will debate anybody, anytime, anyplace, if they think I have a personal agenda sitting around this table. I don't care who it is, where it is, at what time it is, call me and I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Langel.
Well, I'm further, I responded to it. I wrote a letter, which I did send a copy around to council. I did make a couple of editorial changes before I did send it this afternoon. I responded to it. I was disappointed too. My biggest concern with the editorial, and I know I'm a media type, there's nothing the media love any better than a controversy, and normal rule of thumb on something like this, you ignore it and it'll go away. However, the concern I had is, it appeared on Monday, and I had a call Monday night, I hadn't even seen the Vanguard yet, and people saying, what's this all about, you having a personal agenda? I'm going, what? I'm thinking, well, agenda, you know, I'm like Phil, you know, I've got an agenda book, and this is what I'm doing, I don't know what this personal agenda business is all about. And then I read the article on Tuesday when the Vanguard arrived at my door, I'm a loyal subscriber, as I have been for years and will continue to be. I was disappointed in it, I really was, because basically, the two complaints were the Killam Building and the Yarmouth Agricultural Society. And in fairness, you know, as I put in my answer, response...